Let's do this. October 22 Streetport City Council Meeting is now called to order. If you would, please stand, silence your cellphones. If you've not already done so, Councilman Shine will open us with a prayer followed by a pledge by Councilman Everson.
As soon as I put my phone on silence. Let us bow our heads, please. Our heavenly Father, we are so thankful that we live in the greatest land on the face of this earth. Our heavenly Father, would you touch our hearts and touch our minds that the decisions that we make today will be acceptable in thy sight. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Ms. McCullough, Mr. Everson.
Here.
Mr. Oliver Jenkins. Mr. Corbin.
Present.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Shine.
Present.
Mr. Sam Jenkins.
Present. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the October 7th Administrative Council and the City Council meeting October 8? Motion by the Vice Chair, second by Councilman Everson. Please.
Ms. McCullough, we're voting on the minutes. The minutes?
Yes, ma'am. And that is six yes, one absent. At this time, do any council members have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished gifts?
I do. I would like to start out by acknowledging Simone Hennessy from the Providence House. And while she makes it up to the podium, what I'd like to do is read a resolution that we passed earlier this month regarding Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So Simone, and after that, we'll hear a little bit from Simone regarding domestic violence awareness. "A resolution proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and otherwise providing with respect there too. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of our races, ages, gender, and income levels; and whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects over a million Americans each year; and whereas one in three Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence; and whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average; and whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity; and whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime; and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City of Streetport in a regular and legal session convene that the City of Streetport does hereby support all efforts to end domestic violence in the City of Streetport." And that was passed on October 7th. And so, we are here close to the culmination of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we appreciate Simone Hennessy of Providence House being here to talk with us a little bit more.
Thank you. I wanted to give you a little bit of an update. Michael Corbin and other councilmen and women, first of all, and Dale, thank you for your support last year that enabled us to serve over 400 people and that we are continuing to serve. And it makes a huge difference in the work that we do. I want to tell a quick story about just one family that we serve. This is a young woman with a five-year-old child who came along with her boyfriend from California and moved here to Streetport. She got a job. She then shared her house with the boyfriend, who had been abusing, verbally abusing her and physically abusing her prior to that time. He harassed her so much at her office in Streetport that he was banned from the premises. Last week, as she was arriving for work, he threatened her and refused to let her take her car. She left the house on foot. When she got to work, her manager called the police. They took her to Providence House, and she was subsequently transported to her safe house. Our legal advocate then assisted her with the petition for a protective order, and the next day took that file to juvenile court. The judge signed the order for the sheriff to assist her in retrieving her child, the car, and her belongings, and served the abuser. The legal advocate then took her to her home and met the sheriff there to provide safety while she got her child, her belongings, and her car. At the home, it took seven deputies to remove him from the premises and protect her.
That's bad.
And I would like to say that is an unusual circumstance, but it is not. Tasha Morris, who is 38, was shot by her boyfriend and charged with second-degree murder. And as we know, this is an epidemic in our community, and it doesn't matter what race, what religion, what your financial status is, it is the truth across all boundaries. And in fact, one in four women will experience domestic violence in their lifetime. Carrie Jones, who is 43, was run over and killed by her boyfriend. He was charged with second-degree murder. During one week in August here in Streetport, the police responded to 63 domestic violence calls. And in 2012, police responded to an average of 47 every single week and received over 2,400 calls on domestic violence. And domestic violence is not only a threat to the people that are in that situation, both the abuser and the victim, but it is equally dangerous for the police officer who shows up with them. And so, this was a low year, 2,400. The highest year that I saw recently reported was 3,400 calls in a given year. And so, those things are always critical. Etta Thomas, who is 46, was shot by her boyfriend, charged with second-degree murder. And so, as I say, this is serious business and life-threatening. These people lost their lives. And in fact, in Cattle Parish, 73 people have lost their lives, were murdered. It was a homicide since 1997. And so, you know, people always say, well, what's domestic violence all about? Well, it is emotional abuse or behaviors used by one person to control another person. And it doesn't matter whether you're partners, whether you're single, whether you're dating, whether you're living together, separated, it doesn't matter. It includes, it could include physical or verbal abuse, emotional abuse, and certainly economic and sexual abuse. And Shanice, a prude, 24, was shot by her husband. He was charged with negligent homicide. And so, what are the red flags? I think there's some issues that I'd like to bring before you, just to consider that I think are the most important things that are in front of us. First, to be able to identify what are the red flags of domestic violence. And most of those red flags are about embarrassing the other person with names and put-downs and doesn't allow you to see your friends or your families, takes your money, makes all the decisions, tells you that you're a bad parent, threatens to take away or hurt your children, threatens to kill your dog or your children, intimidates you with knives, guns, and other weapons, slaps you, any of those things, and especially forces you to drop your charges when a domestic violence situation occurs. When that person threatens to commit suicide or even threatens to kill you, that's the time to leave, if not before that time. Usually, what happens in a domestic violence situation, when it gets to the point of someone's verbalizing that they're going to harm your children or kill your pets, it's time to run and run for safety. Even one of these can be an identifying factor in an abusive relationship. Last year, we served 118 families that included 207 children and a total of 414 people. We provided, thanks to many of you, over 16,000 nights of safety and support for these families. The second thing that I think is important, not only to recognize what these red flags are, but to understand the importance of how do you deal with it, how do you protect someone. One of the biggest challenges we face locally is attorneys in many cases do not understand that when you do a temporary restraining or a protective order, at the very same time, you must do a safety plan. Because we know that piece of paper is just a piece of paper, and ultimately, the victim or the survivor is responsible for their own safety, because the police cannot be with them 24 hours a day. And so, that means they have to change their routines. In many cases, we're changing identities, we're moving them to other cities. But in many cases, you've seen this play out on the evening news where recently, a couple years ago in Bossier, where the husband knew where the wife worked in that church parking lot, knew the routine, came up, killed her. So, all of these things are really important. The third thing that I'd like to say that is important for all of us is to understand how to use the hotline that we have. It's the 226-5015. Now, that hotline is not just for people who are scared and need safety immediately, but it is for advice. It's for people who want to create a safety plan to call us, wanting to do a temporary restraining order to call us. It is calling and asking how you can help a friend or a relative that you think are in a difficult situation that is not productive, how to join a support group that we run outside for non-residential domestic violence survival, and of course, immediate safety and shelter. But it's also to report an incident. So, if you see something, or hear something, or suspect something, you call the hotline, because we're going to call the police and we're going to check it out, to be sure. Remember Kristen Leonard? She was 29. She was shot by her boyfriend. It was a homicide, suicide, and that was in the last two years. And so, it is a very, very difficult situation. But I think the ultimate role that you can play in ending domestic violence is not to ignore it, not to hide it, not to deny it, but to bring the issue into open talk, open communication, and let abusers know that their tactics are unacceptable. And they're not only unacceptable, but they're illegal, and they are morally and socially unacceptable as well. And so, I say all that to say, we continue to see the challenges in this community. And for us to imagine a community where no one lives in fear will take all of us to do our part every single day in what we witness and what we see and what we do. There also is also a community effort where your support last year was about, I believe, about 33,000, a little over 33,000. And we've come to you again in this budget to ask for 50,000. We continue to see cuts, as many of you have seen play out over our area. I think in Natchitoches, that particular shelter shut down. And so, the challenges we know are here today, and they are going to continue. So, we ask you to give serious consideration to folks like these that really don't have other options to turn to. And so, I want to thank you for your time and appreciate your support, and would be willing to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Madam? Madam Glover? Simone, before you leave, I just want to express my thanks on behalf of a community of grateful citizens for the work that you and all of your charges do with regard to this area. It is one that is a tremendous challenge, not just for Streetport, but for the entirety of the country, however we know statistically, that Streetport, Louisiana in general, has some statistical data that makes us a little bit above the national average, something that we should not take priority and should commend ourselves for working to try and address. I know that this is a situation that has transitioned, at least a couple ways, since I've been mayor. I know when we first started, there was another nonprofit in town that played a very major role.
They did.
In this particular social challenge of ours.
And they did a great job during that time.
They did a very outstanding job, unfortunately.
Absolutely.
There was a need to transition for a myriad of reasons. And the city, but more importantly, you and a host of volunteers and dedicated staff folks stepped into that breach and have helped to bridge that. We thank you. We hope that we can do more. That's a process that we're in the midst of addressing right now. We're not sure, but we also want to make sure that the community as a whole is aware and ask that they help to do more as well and make up for those areas that we've cut at the state level and at the federal level, and see if we can manage to figure out how collectively we feel the need and ensure that there's always a place for those folks who have been threatened and in need of refuge that can be protected from harm and sometimes ultimately dead. So, thank you and God bless you.
Well, thank you, and thank all of you.
Simone, it sounds like you're going to get that $1,000 in.
We're hoping for it. We're praying for it.
It sounds like it, okay. All right.
With all of your help, we will.
David, go.
Thank you.
Madam? Let the record note that Councilman Shine has ceded budget control to the administrative branch.
I've seen he's leading the charge.
He was gratefully accepted.
Well, but I know the power. I've been there long enough to know the power of the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Shine.
Yeah, I know what the power of the administration can do. Now, Mr. Mayor and some don't understand, but Dale, I do. I've been here long enough to know.
We again certainly look to work with you guys outstandingly, get the folks doing very important work that we hope becomes less important in the years, but an area that puts a lot of innocent folks at risk and also, not just here, but nationally represents the greatest threat to our first responders as well. So, we appreciate the information.
Any other recognitions by councilmembers? Councilman James.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to take this opportunity to recognize Ms. Cassandra Callaway, who is a resident of my district. She also works with Streetport Green. I see Ms. Donna Curtis has made it in with Streetport Green. I'm not 100% certain if they're down here on some other business, but I did want to recognize both of them and commend them for the fine job that they're doing in our community.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I want to recognize Lynn Conthon that was here. Steven, what happened to Lynn? Okay, I want to recognize Lynn Conthon that was here. He's been doing a fantastic job in the community.
I saw him walking in a little bit early.
Right. Oh, he's a good friend of Dale's.
We're not going to know where he gets to.
Okay.
Madam Glover, I'll turn it over to you for awards, recognitions, and city business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point, I will briefly ask that you guys give me a minute to recognize a group of folks that were very instrumental in why it is that myself and Councilwoman McCullough were not here with you at the last council meeting. We had the great pleasure and privilege of traveling for our second intercity visit since I've been mayor. We went to the city of Birmingham and took with us a busload of folks, and it was a very, very productive effort. We learned a great deal, had a great microcosm of the city of Streetport, and it would not have been possible had it not been for the very able helping assistance, first and foremost, of my staff, starting with Bernadine Anderson and all the rest of the folks on the second floor who helped to organize. But they were greatly assisted by a group of folks in the community, including Paula Hickman at the Community Foundation, Scott Martinez over at the North Louisiana Economic Partnership, and Helen Jaffe Smith at the Streetport Federal Credit Union. The second trip that we've taken, the first time, we went to Oklahoma City, had a chance to be able to learn a great deal about some of the great things that are happening there. The intent of these efforts is always trying to find a parallel community that has some of the similar issues and challenges that we face here in Streetport, and have an opportunity to be able to learn from some of their best practices that have resulted in opportunities of excellence for them. And in the case of Oklahoma City, it was the way in which their local investment through their Metropolitan Area Projects Program had helped to turn Oklahoma City into one of the growing cities of the latter part of the 20th century and one of the ascending cities of the 21st century. We chose Alabama-Birmingham this time, or Birmingham-Alabama this time, rather, specifically because of some of the transition that we're in in the midst of this community right now with regard to higher education and healthcare, and saw some parallels there that might give us a chance to be able to learn how it is that we might better advance and elevate our own circumstances. Alabama, Birmingham area is sparked, to a large extent, in terms of its economic activity right now by an institution called the University of Alabama at Birmingham, which kind of parallels in many ways around LSU-Streetport, in that they are institutions that are less than 50 years old. They have largely served a commuter student population and have not enjoyed and do not enjoy that century-long history of being a laxative institution like LSU in Baton Rouge or Alabama in Tuscaloosa. They don't have graduates that go back decades, don't have a history of outstanding accomplishments on the athletic field or the basketball courts, and from a political standpoint, may not make up the lion's share of the folks in the legislature who are looking to appropriate dollars. But they also share in common the fact that they have within their confines a healthcare complex, a medical school, and manage to be able to combine those in a way that has allowed the folks in the Birmingham area to experience tremendous growth, development, and opportunity as a result of the presence of the continuum of higher education institutions that exist within that area. And so, we would have the chance to be able to visit with the head of the institution there at UAB, visit and tour a good number of their facilities. Staff, go ahead and start fiddling through some of the pictures that appear on the screen. Staff, go ahead and start fiddling through some of the pictures that appear on the screen. Everybody from the mayor, William Biller, to the head of the University of Birmingham campus were there to welcome us with open arms. Dr. Ray O'Watch, and on down to Dr. Dave Winwood and Linda Lucas. And we spent a good bit of our time as well at an outstanding place that we think has a lot of potential for some parallels here in Shreveport called the Innovation B-Pot and Technology Entrepreneural Ecosystem. It's headed by Susan Matlock, and there we've seen how, within that region of the country, they've managed to be able to combine the intellectual and research activity taking place at the university, and incubate it into the generation of ideas and processes and procedures that can be commercialized and ultimately turned into startups and businesses. And it's created an economic dynamic there within that region that's quite outstanding, that has the Birmingham area as well as all of Alabama. It's one of the fastest-growing regions in our country from an economic standpoint. The University of Alabama Birmingham itself stands as the number-one recipient of all research dollars in the state of Alabama. And they continue to score success after success within the state as a whole. We all know about 20-plus years ago, the folks from Mercedes-Benz decided to locate just outside of the Birmingham area under the mayorship of Richard Arrington. The folks up in Huntsville, at the University of Alabama Huntsville, have a half-century-plus-long history in aerospace, technology, research, development, and business. And just within last year, Mayor Jones down in Mobile, along with the leadership of Alabama, were successful in securing an effort through Airbus that will result, I think, in somewhere about 2,000-plus direct jobs and thousands of other spin-off jobs. And it was a great chance to be able to see how we might be able to come back here and look at our assets in a different way, and hopefully take advantage of the current of the circumstances that exhibit, that exist rather, at both the state level and here locally, and see how we ultimately end up charting for ourselves a better future. The one thing that was consistent between both of the trips, and it's much in line with a lot of the national political thought that's out there today, and that is that unfortunately, as we are seeing being played out right now in Washington, D.C., and unfortunately at the state level as well, not just here in Louisiana but across the country, the ability for local governments to continue to look either to D.C. or the state capital for the ideas or the resources necessary in order to be able to advance and elevate our communities might be a bygone era. In both of these communities, there are prime examples of how local folks decided to take their local challenges, but also their local assets, and translate them into a rising pool of opportunity for all. This group has had an opportunity to have its first follow-up meeting. Since we returned, we have committed to continuing the dialogue at least once a month as we go forward, and hopefully be able to continue to share some of the ideas and concepts that come out of that effort with this council and with the community as a whole, and see how we may be able to incorporate them into our vision going forward. I also want to especially thank Councilwoman McCullough for making the commitment, along with Commissioner Matthew Lynn. They were two of our electeds who were a part of the effort, along with, as I mentioned, 50-plus others, that included everything else from university heads to business heads to heads of community organizations, and all points in between. And again, we look forward to seeing how we continue to have a chance to be able to learn and make Shreveport better. With that, Mr. Chairman, I also want to make a quick moment to mention there are a myriad of outstanding things happening in the Shreveport, Bojia area this week that we all should be excited about. We'll be welcoming the chief justice of the Louisiana State Supreme Court to Shreveport on tomorrow. We look forward to having a chance to host her for breakfast and hear her address the local bar at a noon luncheon. We're also very excited that college football, for the first time this year, will be returning to the city of Shreveport in the Shreveport Classic, which will pit Jackson State University against Proview A&amp;M at the Independence Stadium during the opening weekend of Louisiana State Fair. I have no doubt, Mr. Shawn, that Belevo at Jackson State will be especially honored in that they only had the opportunity to beat up on each other just past Saturday as opposed to competing their effort against the other two.
There you go.
So, we hope that lots of local folks will come out, engage, and participate, and also, we certainly welcome and hope that we'll have lots of visitors who'll be coming from the Texas and the Mississippi communities. Wrapped in, around all that, Mr. Chairman, councilmembers, with a successful weather that we had a chance to enjoy again. You all were here at the end of the Shreveport, or the Louisiana Film Prize, which had its second year, and it was highly successful. And we'll offer some comment on some of the other events that are coming up in our last comments before we wrap up today's meeting today, after we've heard from public comments. At this point, I also want to transition back over to you guys as quickly as can, because I know we have some folks here, that we have some other folks throughout the city of Shreveport who are anxious to hear about, both in terms of our cable as well as our solid waste. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the council.
Thank you, Mayor Glover. And Dale, I'm going to let you call up friends from Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Mayor indicated, recycling has been a major point of discussion. So, we have with us today, representing Pratt, Mr. Shawn State, and Representative Republic, Mr. Roy Walters, along with our Public Works Director, Stan Harris. They're going to basically give us an update on the status of operations, future plans, address some issues that have been raised, and discuss them with us, and discuss them with you guys as councilmembers. So, at this point, I guess we'll turn it over to Mr. State from Pratt.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you a little bit about the way of going on. We understand that we have some service issues of late, specifically the last, say, three to six months. Roy Walters with Republic is here, and Roy's our subcontract, and he's going to talk a little bit about what we intend on doing to fix the issues. I'm very supportive of Roy, what he's trying to do, and we've talked about the plans, and I think he's got some good plans in place to try and get back on track, so.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Councilmen, Mr. Mayor, Dale. Most of what I may talk about, we're already in place. We've implemented a lot of plans since this started. One of the things that really happened in the beginning of this, this contract started with nine trucks and nine drivers on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. As the last five years have gone, we've grown, Monday and Tuesday, to 12 trucks, 12 drivers, and we're still running nine on Thursdays and Fridays. This imbalance created some issues for us. We've been, we were able to work our way through it, and then we lost some people in June. We had some real challenges with staffing and filling those positions. Once we got them filled, you know, our company has adopted some real stringent training programs. We don't allow, we can't hire a driver and put them in a truck. And, you know, this is my fault. I was slow to get the people on board. The training period itself is with us is anywhere from six to 10 weeks, the shortest time possible is six. So, as we've gotten these people on board, they're trained now, you know, we're still continuing to experience some issues. So, we've now just, what we've done is we have thrown all wings in the hat. I mean, every supervisor I've got is now associated with this. Myself, my operations manager, our full Shreveport supervisor are all on board, and we're all assisting the new drivers in getting an understanding of what they have to accomplish. Part of what we do every day, every driver's got a map. His map is his route. Every driver's got a highlighter, and we're highlighting every street as we go, because as we know, the last few months, what we've really experienced is streets being missed, and that's from new people, missing streets, turning left when they should have turned right. By doing what we're doing with these maps, we're eliminating that, and we're identifying the areas where the drivers were making the mistakes. Another part of that is we just, in the fact they came in today, we got our first four GPSs in, we're going to pilot GPSs. Once we get all the GPS system in, we will run the maps and the GPSs in conjunction until we're certain that both are working together, so. You know, in addition to that, you know, we know that we're going to have failures. I mean, in this industry, you're relying on people and equipment, and there are times when people don't show up and equipment fails. So, one of the things that our company has the ability to do out of our Dallas call center is we have an automated call program. So, we're working with the administration, and they're trying to assist us with 911 and getting, what we need to do is redo our routes with these addresses from the city and phone numbers attached to them, so that if there is a failure, if we do miss a couple of streets, we'll be able to go into that automated system, tell them section three of route four, and have them call each one of those homes and let them know that we missed you today, we'll be there tomorrow morning before 10 o'clock. I wish I could say that I've got this fixed 100% right now. I can't. This is going to take a little bit of time, and I hope you'll be patient, and I certainly hope the residents of Shreveport will be patient with us. We're committed to this. I've been in this business 27 years. I've got a little unique situation here in the, that there's more people involved in this, but, you know, my company's invested here. We've got 138 employees here. Our 138, we may be part of a large company, but these people live here, we work here, we raise our children here, and we invest here. And our company's committed to that investment in trucks and people and whatever it takes to satisfy our obligation. We know we made a mistake, and it's my mistake. I was slow to respond. Try to be patient with us. I'm telling you, it's going to be corrected. I can tell you that as of 1:00 today, I had 12 calls from WebQA, which, that would be for Friday and Monday, 12 complaints out of a potential 35,000 services is not that bad. So, we're going to get there, we're going to get back there, and that's, in prior to this, that's where we were, and we'll get back to that level.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. Roy, I spoke with you about a week ago on the phone, and you mentioned something about trying to go to a two-day program. Is that still...
I think, I think what we need to do at this point is, I think we need to correct what we've got, and then explore any other opportunities with the administration. If there's an opportunity to do something different, then bring it to the council.
Well, you mentioned you have 12 drivers on Monday, Tuesday, and nine Thursday, Friday?
Yes, sir.
So, it's because you have larger routes or more territory you're covering those three days, so what are the other three doing?
Monday and Tuesday, about 70% of the volume that we collect in recycle volume comes from Monday and Tuesday.
So, having only 12 employees, you don't have, you're talking about six weeks' worth of training before you turn somebody loose, so what do you do when you have absentee? How do you fill that?
I'm glad you brought that up, because we just added two new swing drivers for the Shreveport routes. And I understand that there's some questions about how this is going to affect, or us getting the Boja City contract is going to affect this. And to be perfectly honest with you, having Boja City and the swing drivers that we hire with Boja City as well, gives us actually more resources from a people perspective when we do have issues with people.
Okay. I know that's the biggest complaint I get, is because people were getting missed, and they'll call me, and they'll say, "Well, I'm just not going to put it out there anymore. They're not going to pick it up."
We're begging people not to do that.
And I do the same, and I explain to them why, and whatever, you know, and they'll call and say, "Well, you know, why are we paying 2.50, and you're making all the money," and go through all that spiel, but people still don't quite understand it, and I don't know why, but anyway, I know you're going to get resolved. I got faith in you, Roy, because you've been at this a long time, and I know you'll get it treated.
We really will. And one thing that I'd like to say, and if there's any residents, and we need to get this out there for people to know, is please call in. When you have new people, there's going to be misses, there's going to be issues. We want that communication.
And that's what I've done, I want you to call me, because we don't know the problem if we don't get the calls, so. Just like you don't. You don't know if you don't get the call, whether it be from a council member or a customer, but.
And Roy, I certainly appreciate your honesty and candor with approaching the situation and looking for solutions. Certainly, I've experienced with constituents in my district and personally, that my recyclables have not been picked up on the right day, and sometimes two days afterwards. We've discussed that, and I think you're on the right track. In some ways, it's a good problem on Monday and Tuesday, because there is so many citizens participating and so much tonnage involved. You know, what we've got to do is get that same participation on the Thursday, Friday routes, too, and everybody wins. We're putting less in landfill, Pratt has more to recycle, and your guys are working steady. I want to be sure, because I know there may be citizens watching, the media is covering this, I want to be sure that we tell citizens the proper way to complain or lodge a complaint if their recyclables aren't picked up. Many of them know they're going to call their council member. But if they pick up the phone and they call the citizen complaint line, or just the mayor's office, or they're trying to call Pratt, what is the preferred way for citizens to pass their information along so that it's in your system and you can follow up on it the right way?
I'll speak to that a little bit. I mean, I don't want to speak for Stan Wolf or Shawn on where it's best for the calls to go. I would just say this. The calls, if they go to the Public Works Department, if they go to the mayor's office, or if they go to Pratt in Atlanta, which I would think would be the preferable place, the city's got a program called WebQA where your complaint is logged, you actually can ask for your complaint number, and we'll get, there's a number they'll give you, so that you can track it. You can call back in and say, "Hey, here's my complaint number, I haven't had this resolved yet." Now, you know, a lot of residents aren't going to take the time to write that down, but it's important that we get these issues into WebQA, because we use that to analyze where our issues are and where we need to move to correct some things. And I can give you example after example of, you know, of situations that have been corrected because of the documentation in WebQA. So, it's a very valuable system. I believe the city probably spent a whole lot of money on it, so the residents should use it.
Since we're speaking of that, and we have our new piece on our website, and this is really a question, I mean, I'm directing it at the administration, but I don't expect Dale to actually know the answer to this, but if somebody types in that on the, what is it called, issues, or, you know, on the front page of the website, and then it takes that, and recycling is one of your issues, somebody types in and says, "Hey, my recycling was not picked up today." How, where would it go from there for it to get to him? I mean, just, I mean, is there a manual aspect to that? Is it automatically routed? And Stan, if you've got the answer, I'm curious to know, because I do know that a lot of people get this, "Hey, well, I called this phone number, this didn't answer." It was, it's very difficult to get in a really good discussion about, I mean, I don't know what you mean, what an answer, which number you come on, call the one on the website, which one on, and we just find ourselves in this tree of just all these different roots, and I'm hoping that the website deal will give us a tracking number into the system, but it may not be timely.
And Stan, before you, before you talk, look, one of the things that we've done on our, with the mayor's office, CEO's offices, we really encourage the citizens to call that number, because the guys up front are trained to plug in the WebQA, and email automatically goes out to both Republic and Public Works. The tracking number is assigned, and that way, we can really track it. You know, we talk, when they have an 800 number, and, you know, as I said, with those guys, we'd rather our citizens call us, because then we know, we can track it, it's in the system, we can keep up with it, we can follow up on it, we can gauge how well things are being addressed, and to type complaints and things like that. So, we're trying to simplify, but basically, if they call the mayor's office, if they call Public Works, it's going to get into WebQA. And now, let Stan address the website issue.
On the website issue, it'll come back to Public Works. Whenever it comes back to Public Works, we will always put it in WebQA. As Roy indicated, WebQA is the piece of software where we want to keep track of everything, because that keeps a record. We can go back in there and look at complaints and see how they've been done in the past and so on, actually analyze the information. So, we're working with...
So, we're working with multiple sources where you can get information in. I understand what you're saying about the website. If you call that, if you submit into that, then where does that go and how does that relate to WebQA? Well, it's going to come to Public Works and then we have to disseminate that then.
Okay. I'm going to, you could say that I'm really interested in the detail and I'm really interested in the detail, okay? I press, report a concern, select recycling, put in my address, I send. What happens?
That's going to come, I believe that's going to come to Public Works for us.
Okay. So, it's going to show up in somebody's email?
Public Works.
The Public Works. Are there multiple people that look at that email or just one person that gets that email?
It comes into one primary area that DeSoski looks at and then it gets disseminated.
When you say area, there's multiple people looking at that website, I mean, that email account on a daily basis?
We have five divisions, so...
Okay. And so, then they would manually take that data, I'm going to use the term manually, and then hand input it into the WebQA.
That is correct.
And then, from the WebQA, when she inputs that, it automatically sends a message to...
Right, goes to Pratt.
All right.
It goes to Pratt's.
Actually, from WebQA, it typically goes to my dispatcher, who dispatches the truck to take care of it. And I get a copy of most of them. Mostly what I see...
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, Stan, I don't want to burden you, but if, we have a certain amount of time to close that as well. So, those notifications come directly to me. If there's an issue that is put into WebQA and it's not resolved within the, what is it, 24 hours?
Go ahead.
24 hours. I get an email immediately from the WebQA system. I mean, I get them at midnight because I mean, it's not a day and 24 hours, it's on a clock. So, when I get my notification, I may get them at 2:00 in the morning, you haven't resolved this in a time and manner. So, we know when we haven't resolved one the same way. We'll close it.
Okay. And then, when I, when we say this, when we say, okay, well, we want somebody to call in on our new website, we go to the "How Do I Trash Garbage Collection Days" tab? Because we used to have it on the front page of our...
Thank you.
And yet, I say this, I mean, I get these calls all the time and I, of course, say, "Go to the website and, you know, where on the website?" And then I try to remember. So, I went through this the other day and I obviously know that Lynette is extremely judicious. I mean, she, if you get it to her, she takes care of it. There's no, I would never, but it's not 100% clear in this system when I pull it up today what number I'm supposed to be calling. I don't believe 6300 is the number that they should be calling, but maybe it's...
Public Works.
Yeah. They can't, that's our, that's our service number. 673-6300. We can receive all calls through this.
If you look at it, it doesn't really say if your garbage is not picked up, call 673, it does say if you've got a damaged cart, call 6300, if you've got a bogey collection, if you've got all these other issues.
That's our primary number.
And on the, on the report of concern page where it gives you a list of concerns to choose from, the link there to curbside recycling collection, the link is broken. Not going to a clean page.
We'll take a look at that, yeah.
I know that some of the things we've talked about so far may solve, or should solve a lot of problems and, you know, hindsight's great too. I still think we need a sticker that's put on the blue bins that is the definitive number to call because even the discussion that we've had the last five minutes, it's still confusing and we're not giving our citizens a number to call. And if there's a way to put a sticker on those bins, the next time we order bins, there's a number embossed in them, I think that helps a little bit.
And it speaks to a point, but, you know, if the council members have difficulty determining what the appropriate number to call is, you can be assured that the general public has difficulty determining that. And it sort of reminds me of the importance of education, you know, also when we're talking about how Monday and Tuesdays, we're getting tremendous participation levels whereas later in the week, collection cycles, we're not getting as much. Towards the beginning of the contract, I remember there was a, you know, there was an allotment that was, of resources that were dedicated towards education and I know the mayor has a Just COVID campaign, there were other aspects. Shreveport Green, I believe, was administering education about, you know, not only the importance of recycling, but also what to recycle, how to recycle, what goes in the bins, how to place it in the bin. I know in a lot of communities where I find that people complain that their bins aren't getting picked up and their neighbors were, you know, it's not as if the whole street was missed, it was just one or two. Sometimes it's because the recycling is in a bag or it's got things in there that are obviously not recyclable. So, that education component of it is something that I'd really like to see stepped up somehow, you know, through, and I'm open as to how that can take place, but...
We try to provide information on the website as it relates to that. We also have brochures. When we go out to community groups, we pass out, we talk about what's appropriate, what's not appropriate.
Mr. Chairman, I think, kind of piggybacking on what he said, I think we could put some of this information in our water bills, especially the little sticker with the phone number and everything, and maybe some other little information. I think we could get it directly to our households. If I'm making any sense, Mr. Sibley, I don't know whether that would be too much trouble, but if you could kind of condense it down and put it in the water bills, because most people get water bills. You know, people get water bills who might not have computers. And we could get their information out, because I represent a lot of people, like Sam and Oliver, you do too, Jeff, you know, that might not have access to computers, but if you put in a water bill and kind of condense it down, and I think you'd get it to every household. And, Mr. Sibley, you know, I wouldn't only do this just maybe one time. I think I would probably do it maybe once every six months for a while until we know that we've covered it, which then have to add to the posters, I mean, you know, to be something like...
Thank you, Sean.
And if you don't mind me just adding to that, when we started the program, we did put quite a bit of money into public service announcements and some education to kick it off. We can do that again, we can revisit that. We contracted the local company and they did some marketing for us. Happy to do that again. The Just COVID website is still up and running. We keep that active, just a matter of letting folks know it's still there.
Yeah, I think I made the benefit, y'all as well as, you know, the general administration of the program, I think balancing out the need base of it throughout the city and the routes, obviously is good on the employees, but for y'all to maybe end up with more usable product or more recyclable material, I think during the early cycles of it, I think our participation, if I recall, was almost double what it is now, so...
We need to fix the service issues. We don't want to turn people off from recycling. You know, we need the material here in Shreveport, so we need to make an effort to let folks know how to get it to us.
And just so, as part of our contract or between the city and you all, right, there's a piece in there that you're, that's one of your responsibilities, right? Or that's one of your...
There is some language in there about doing some things in the community and making sure that some educational stuff is done.
Education.
It's vague, but yes, it's in there.
And do you, can you give us an idea of kind of what we've done in, under that task for the last year or two?
Yeah, give me just a second, I've got a...
Okay.
Well, there's just a handful of things. In some cases, it's more of sponsorships for the local community, in other cases, it's directly related to recycling and Earth Day and those kinds of events. But we've done some things out at Schimshagen for Earth Day in 2013, Angel Training in 2012, Red River Cleanup in 2010, the Velo Dendro to Shreveport Bike Tour a couple of years. On Earth Day, I think it was two years ago, we did the Lorax movie here in town where we had some children come out and they loved the attended movie. And then there's other things like the Independence Tour and the Highland Jazz and Blues Festival and Susan G. Kuhlman Golf Tournament multiple years, Sister Fibrosis Walk, a famous charity golf tour for Children's Miracle Network a couple of years here in Shreveport. So, we are active in the community.
Yeah, and I just think we need recycling-specific education.
I think those are things as a corporate citizen, we would expect that to do, but I think what we're asking for, and I'll just put it bluntly, is we want to see another ad campaign. We want to see working with Shreveport Green and let's getting recycling-specific information out and why it's important and why it makes a difference to our citizens.
We can do that.
I mean, I even think, even at the schools...
Absolutely.
I mean, you know, whatever, you know, one quarter to go through a school and, you know, provide one class on the importance of recycling. I mean, we really need to build that base here, in my opinion, relative to other parts of the country because we don't have the same appreciation or maybe, in other terms, of the way we as citizens think about the importance of recycling. There's certainly areas of this country that have a higher regard for it.
It's got to become a part of our culture.
I agree.
We do not have that in our, in our culture and not cutting Oliver off. TV is good, but a lot of times, that's when a person go get their sandwich, they go, because I'm not a, to me, I'm not a beer drinker and because I don't know what my past is listing in or not, but Dale, I'm a Methodist, I might drink a little wine, not beer, a Methodist, drink a little, you know, a little wine.
I don't know, but I'm a Methodist.
Okay. But, yeah, I think Oliver kind of hit it on the head, you know, you've got to start going to our schools because we've got to make this part of our culture. This has not been a part of our culture, you know, going to rodeo, football games, things like that, that's barbecues, that's part of our culture. And we've got to kind of put it in print sometimes so people can kind of have it because there are a lot of people doing commercial times, you know, they go in a refrigerator and ain't no telling what they might be getting into their refrigerators and they'll miss it. So, but this is, this has got to be something that we really pinpoint. This is got to, this is something that we've got to make a concerted effort at doing because if we don't, it's not going to really go over. Not that you're not doing a good job, but you can do a great job.
Any other questions?
Hit the request button, request. I just wanted to, it was mentioned that we might need to put a little bit more emphasis on advertisement. I mean, actually, as a former Kettle Perry's teacher, Kettle Perry's school system, I mean, recyclables was almost a unit in our curriculum. I do feel that there's, you know, there's a little slack on recycling, but to be honest, I actually grew, I actually grew personal in appreciation for recycling when I saw my mirror on television, you know, with the recyclable bin. And as a matter of fact, my husband who's passed away, after he passed away, I really started to just start throwing all of the recyclable stuff away, but it's like he was standing right there saying, "No, you know, recycle." And so, I wanted to take this opportunity since it's been suggested that you put more emphasis on advertisement, to invite you to my district, to my alma mater, Green Oaks High School. I would like to invite you there if you wanted to consider advertisements in one of the schools in the Kettle Perry's school system to visit or consider utilizing Green Oaks High School Giants.
Okay. You'd be happy to.
All right. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just to go back to the phone issue, there are two places any citizen can call that it will automatically get into the system and get to the right place. One is the mayor's office, the basic number, that goes to Public Works. What we've been trying to do is get, to simplify things, to cut out all the different 800s and all that, but if they call one of those two places, it'll get registered, it'll get to the right place, it'll be tracked and they'll be in the system. It'll get to all the appropriate people, so if they're confused at all or have any question at all, dial in the mayor's office or Public Works, we'll get it, we'll get it going.
And Mr. Sibley, just for the record, would you state those two numbers?
Yes, sir. The mayor's office, 673-5050, 5050. Public Works, 673-6300.
That's correct.
In any marketing we do, we'll make sure that we work closely with the mayor's office and Public Works to make sure we're online.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, Mike Laver. Councilmembers, before we wrap up, I want to first of all express thanks and appreciation for what I hear is a group of local leaders who believe in and support recycling. You know, there was a time when many would have said that that would have been something that you would not have heard come from the broad range of voices that just spoke on this issue, so I want to thank you guys because as Mr. Stein just referenced, you know, this is something that has not been a part of the culture of Shreveport. It's generally considered to be something that you would see in communities that come from a different mix, a makeup and demographic mix in what we're possessed of here in Shreveport. I guess that's the term I'm looking for, Mr. Jenkins. But the fact that we have seen a growing interest and a growing level of excitement and a growing level of enthusiasm for recycling is a positive sign and is an indication that Shreveport is one of those forward-looking communities that understands that while there still may be areas of the country and the world that are still yet to embrace this type of efforts to the extent that we have, that more will be followed and that we still have further yet to go. Also, I want to thank you guys for the input that you've given. I know that you've got Rod and Dan between Communications and IT taking copious notes with the questions about the website. We need to make sure that we are effectively, since this is a revision drastically of what our website has been in previous years and one that we expect to be able to be better suited to more effectively serve our citizens, we want to make sure that we're in a position to be able to do that. It also leads me to a discussion I've had over the years with Dale and other members of the administration about the idea of a 311 system for Shreveport that gives our folks one central non-emergency number to be able to call and have your information effectively delivered and your concerns effectively addressed, but that's another conversation for us to continue to have. But as Dale mentioned, getting those complaints to the mayor's office, to Public Works, gives us a chance to make sure that we are in effective and consistent communication with the folks at Pratt and Republic to be able to effectively track the situation. And lastly, I think the opportunity to be able to come back and further educate our community about the recycling circumstances that we have here and to encourage them to continue to participate is something that's quite timely. You know, one of the favorite stories I enjoy telling folks about, my tenure as mayor was one day walking into a convenience store and a clerk there had her daughter there with her because she didn't have a babysitter for the after-school hours and her daughter looked up as I walked in the store and her mom looked at her and said, "Darling, do you know who that is?" She said, "Yes, Mama, I do." She said, "Well, who is that?" She said, "That's the man who sells the blue trash cans on television." So, that, to me, was a firm example that marketing works because I wasn't the mayor, I was the man who sold the blue trash cans. And so, whether it's me or some collection of voices, again, sending that message and well, encourage it back out and getting the children of the city reacquainted with him so that they know who he is and that that's something that we need to continue to do and do at a greater level. It's something that we welcome, the opportunity to be able to engage both Republic and Pratt as well as the council and the community as we go forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You and Mr. Stein both bring up something that stood out in the previous conversation with me. We do have to ingrain in our kids and bringing it up that recycling is important. And Roy, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you come back up, you know, sometimes we talk about, we fall into this trap of... we talk about we fall into this trap of thinking of cities to our west and the grass is greener. Would you just repeat a little bit that we had discussed a couple of days ago about our participation in recycling versus, for example, Plano and the difference in tonnage there?
Plano holds 69,000 homes, Shreveport, I think we estimate 66. The monthly tonnage in Plano is about 1,950 tons a month and we average between 600 and 650. About 30% of what Plano is producing.
It's a great opportunity out there for us. Certainly don't want to be outdone by something in Texas. I'm sure that that's very clear.
I think that should be our goal.
And you know who's over in Plano now?
Apparently you have a car.
I'm just hoping whip them in the creek, they're asleep, came of recycling.
He may be selling blue bands over there too.
I think the mayor trained him and sent him over there.
Starts with the children. It really starts with the children.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Chairman, we appreciate the opportunity to present it. Thanks, gentlemen. Thanks, Dan.
Mr. Chairman, the Comcast presentation will be at the next council meeting.
Okay.
Not at today.
All right. At this time, does any council member have any concerns relative to property standards? Councilman Weyer, Dorothy?
In fact, Dorothy, if you'll just come up here and get this, I'll just pass it on to you. It's way too long to talk about it.
Thank you, Dorothy.
We have no reports today under the... You want to speak about a property standards issue? That will be at the end of the meeting for that. Sorry. All right. We have no reports today. We have no public hearing on the agenda today. Mr. Thompson, is there any legislation to be added?
We have three items, Mr. Chairman. One, Resolution 193 is a resolution suspending the effects of certain conversions of Chapter 10 and Chapter 106 of the Bay relative to the unseen and otherwise providing with respect thereto. 194 will ratify the use of certain equipment by Olive Street Ministries and 195 will amend and reenact Resolution Number 97 of 2012, which authorizes the expenditure of citywide street improvement program funds for certain streets in District G by adding Pine's Road Concrete Pound Replacement to the list.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of adding these items to our agenda today? Is there anyone present who would speak in opposition to adding these items to our agenda today?
If not, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by the vice chair, second by Councilman Emerson.
Yes, just for purposes of clarification, Mr. Chairman, Number 195, the original division of the 2011 bond money, gave each district 3 million. I did not use my entire 3 million. This is just usually a reminder of that sum of money. This is not any kind of new money, okay?
I'm sure I wasn't supposed to get some of that money, are you?
I don't know.
I could tell you I could have some of that.
I think I heard him say he was sure.
And another observation is, Mr. Sibley, the Pine Road, I don't want to run through District G, but F also.
And A.
Especially if it's part of...
And A.
But this part of Pine is... It's only District G.
I specifically read this whereas where you're taking money from District A and moving it to G.
Not at all.
Did you read that in there?
No, I didn't see that.
Well, you better.
That is seven yes, no, opposed.
Read it closely before we vote on it.
At this time, I have no public comments on agenda items. We have no confirmations or appointments. There are no items under consent agenda to be introduced. Mr. Thompson, please proceed with resolutions to adopt.
We're under eight B. The first is Resolution Number Nine. It authorizes 1013 East Kings Highway to connect to the water and sewer system of the city.
So moved. Second. Motion by the chair, second by the vice chair. Any discussion? Doc, please debate.
I hit yes.
It is seven yes. Mr. Thompson?
Chairman, we're under Section 9A, Resolutions on Second Reading and Final Passage. It shall only require one reading. 183 authorizes institution of expropriation proceedings against certain described property within the city of Shreveport in connection with the Murphy Street Park project.
Seven eleven. Motion by Councilman Sam Jenkins, second by the vice chair. Discussion.
Is there, and I don't know why it's not opening up on here. On these, on these expropriation, there's a cost associated with them now?
You mean for each individual parcel?
I mean collectively, I want to make sure I understand this because, and I certainly understand that Councilman Jenkins is proposing here and I remember the history and I remember what happened, but we've currently got in a capital project, a certain amount of money allocated to it? Is that correct?
Yes, 220,000.
220,000.
And that's some of our previously unused bond money that we're using.
Okay. And by virtue of voting for this, that is essentially authorizing the expenditure of some of that money up to whatever the cost of these parcels are to acquire them. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And the, since they're adjudicated or we're expropriating these, excuse me, so whatever that appraised value is, is going to go into some escrow fund or some fund and it's going to sit there until somebody is either going to claim it or if nobody claims it, it would end up in the states, God. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm going to just say that I'm not in favor of these, of this expenditure and I'm going to ask that the council, those that see fit, not to support this piece of legislation because I think we have higher priorities for this money than that.
Such as?
Streets.
But now...
Wow.
Well, let me say this. We always have streets as a priority and we spend a lot of money on streets. The bottom line on this is, this is a project, we're at a stage right now where we're carrying out a project that's already been put in place. Now, I want to remind you once again, Councilman Oliver Jenkins, these funds there are some of the same funds that we supported and used, I want to say half a million dollars of it for street skate projects around LSU Medical Center. This is coming from the same source. That has necessarily become a reality in and of itself. Now, I think this is closer to a reality than what that project may be, but the bottom line on it is, we already voted to create the project, we voted to fund it. Now we're in the process of carrying it out. I don't know if your reservations, you think this is some money going to end up with the state or not. I mean, I think you may be presupposing that because most of these parcels are tied to somebody, either a nonprofit or some individual who I think is going to make out a claim for this money. Now, I'm saying, I don't know if that's what your concern is, that maybe the city is in some form or fashion giving money to the state, but you may be making a pretty big leap when you say that, when we, in some form or fashion, identify who has either an interest in the property or is a straight-out owner of the property. So we certainly don't want to just take property from someone that don't compensate for it. This is an easier proceeding to get past a lot of the title problems and other issues that could come up with this, but it's certainly a method that we've been using to get property for other projects that we need, some of which is in the Leadbetter area, some of which may have been associated with the Millennium Project and several others that have come before, so it's not an unusual process that we're talking about here. So I'm not sure what your reservation may be, but there are persons who very well make a claim for the money and just receive it at a price much less than what we probably could have negotiated with them to receive it. So I think we're being pretty prudent going forward in this matter and the project is probably up and rolling. All we're doing now is carrying out those steps that it takes to acquire the property. Let us make that forward. Mr. Chairman, I don't generally like to get involved in family affairs, you know, between the two Jenkins and I learned after about 30 years on the council from Councilwoman McCullough not to get involved in other districts, but I guess I haven't learned very well, but I think Councilman Sam Jenkins has a point there. I think this money is going to be well spent. I think it's going to be spent for people who really need the facilities that will eventually be put in that district because Councilman Jenkins, both Sam and Oliver, have promised me that we'll have a one-on-one after we get these facilities.
Absolutely. That's one of the reasons we play the basketball cards.
Okay, right. So, and I can understand what Councilman Oliver Jenkins is saying, but I really think, Sam, this time, you're on the right track that this money is going to be spent for an excellent cause, so.
If you go in that area, like you're saying, Councilman Shine, if we don't begin to try to invest a son degree in some of our older core neighborhoods like this Lakeside area over there, if you go in that area, most everything is closed down. The school that was over there is closed down. One of the nearest convenience stores for reasons beyond our control is closed down. You got people that are trying to move back in the area. I think it helps to revitalize that neighborhood. It gives the neighborhood something to be proud of. It gives them a meeting place where they could come and get to know one another and make plans for the neighborhood and it adds to the quality of life. I think it's in keeping with what our master plan has suggested to us to do, which is to go into some of these neighborhoods and find ways to revitalize and bring them back around. And that's a very well-respected traditional neighborhood in our city. I don't think it ought to be ignored. I think if you look at what's there now, a blighted, empty lot, overgrown most of the time, you got children playing in the street on basketball goals. You got elderly people that's got to walk along the street just to get some exercise. I think that it is a worthy investment of money and I don't think we're asking too much here. Once again, the project is up, it's funded, it's just a matter now of taking out, carrying out the steps that it takes to acquire the property, then we go to the next step. But like I said, I don't know what your reservation on this may be, but I think you've got more reasons, and I'll ask you to change your mind about this, you've got more reasons to move forward with a project like this than to go against a project such as this.
Mr. Chairman, and this is my last statement, Dale, I want to involve you and the chairman after the facilities are built that we could get some outdoor education going in that area. Maybe a nice reading program and a nice science program and we might be able to teach the kids how to handle some insurance programs. So if I could get you and the chairman involved in that, I, you know, I think it would not only deal with athletics, but it would deal with the intellectual part of it.
Glad to work with the chairman on that, Mr. Shine.
I'm not commenting on that. Mr. Sibley and Mayor Deven, my question may be more directed towards Shelley. I know that we did open this project with $220,000 that we've got restrictions about how we can use it. Since that time, other things have come around and I guess my question is, with $220,000 to get these land parcels, do we have a plan in place of what we're going to do with this park and is this, is that plan within this budget or are we going to be in a scenario down the road where, okay, we've expended this, we're not where we need to be, we need to come back and use more public funds to continue to make the park bigger or better or put equipment there? If it means we need to postpone this for a little while until we get answers to that, I'll make a substitute motion to do that, but I just want to be sure we have a, we have a plan and a budget because coming from a district that has one park in the entire council district, I have concerns about adding parks that are going to continue to cost us.
Now, let's be clear on something now. When we talk about this particular park, we're not talking about like a recreation center with a building on it and repeated costs like for utilities and keeping up a building. This is just going to be more or less what we call like a pocket park. This is going to be green space and I thought the plan had been distributed exactly what earlier. You're going to have a walking, a walking track on there, you're going to have basketball goals, you're going to have some canopies on there, maybe some picnic tables and things like that. We're not talking about a high-expense project here at all, so I don't know if I took the wrong idea. I thought that the plan and the information that had already been distributed on this particular park, I mean, this stuff dates back a little while now. This is not, not something new, but we are not into a, what I call a high-cost, high-maintenance scenario with this particular park. I wouldn't dare go there myself. This is going to be a more simple park and one of the things I think I like about it is that the citizens themselves want to be involved with some of the maintenance of the park, you know? The various spaces that you can do that to try to keep the park up and help out with maintaining the park is something they've wanted a long time. But the bottom line, the whole thing is, I don't want someone to leave here at the city today thinking that we have something here that's going to have a lot of recurring costs to it. Rain and sunshine is going to do a lot of the maintenance for what we're about to do here at this particular park.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, to the mayor.
Mr. Chairman, and we'll bring Shelley up for a specific response to your, to your question, but Councilman Sam Jenkins, I think, has hit the nail on the head with regard to the concept of what's envisioned here. This is the very lowest rung when it comes to park maintenance upkeep and what have you. The term that he uses is exactly what this constitutes, a pocket park. It's a place that does not have a building or structure that has to be cleaned, maintained or what have you. You have grassed base, you have the courts and the other things and what have you. So from a maintenance upkeep standpoint, it's not nearly the type of challenge from an operational standpoint, from a maintenance standpoint, as a recreational center, a community center or what have you. And to go in line with, I think, the sentiments that have been offered by both Mr. Shine and Mr. Sam Jenkins in that what this represents in terms of that particular neighborhood, we believe from an administration standpoint, the kind of investment that helps to serve that, the kind of group that continues to hold together and bind also the kind of quality of life that frankly, our central city neighborhoods are challenged by right now. And it's in line with the precepts of our master plan that talks about that continued need to invest within the loop or our urban core while at the same time looking for those ways and manners in which we right-size those types of functions and operations that no longer should be continued at the manner and level in which they have. That's why you've seen in some areas right now where we once had swimming pools open, we don't have them open anymore because of the decisions and thoughts that have gone into by both staff, community, as well as the council administration to say, you know, that's something we no longer need to do at that location, at that level and to that degree. We believe this represents an appropriate investment and would hopefully end up being something that would be an asset to that particular region and by extension, an asset to the balance of the city.
Councilman Oliver Jenkins.
Like I said, I don't, I'm not saying that the best intent is not there with Councilman Sam Jenkins. I think his intent is in the, in the right place. I'm just worried about the secondary effects. I've obviously seen some documents recently from the administration about what it costs to maintain a park and I often vow to myself, really, the city, when I look at what the city owns and maintains, acquiring more and maintaining more is not the direction our city meets to go. That is... That is, and if we could trade, you know, five lots here for five somewhere else in this city, I would do it in a second. But as we grow our footprint, there is just more maintenance required for our city. I even have a joke that we need another park like the parish needs another building. Now, they've acquired another building recently, so I'm not sure I wanna follow suit.
I thought you were saying we need another park like we need another dog park.
And I don't even wanna go into that part of this discussion because that is...
I just said, you know, we grow, we are growing our footprint. We are going out and we are bringing in more property, but I would suggest to you, you cannot, you cannot ignore some of our older core areas inside the loop that we need to make some investments in and to revitalize and repopulate and to get people to live in back in these areas. I mean, you know, I caught heat for voting for the last annexation that came before this body, but I understand that you got to have a mixed housing for people to get the quality of life that they're looking for and what they can afford. I would say again, this is not the wrong direction. If you're talking about the growth and development of this city, you cannot want to continue to vote for annexations, bring in new areas that we have to care for, and ignore those areas that already exist, that's been around a long time, where people have been paying taxes for generations, and not wanna go back in and put anything in that that could help them. So, I think this is in keeping with what our master plan, citizen-based suggestions are all about and all of that. I think we need to reinvest, redevelop, revitalize some of our inner-city areas to keep them populated, keep people wanting to live in those areas. You can't expect people to live somewhere where nothing is at. As I said, the school is closed down, you know, you even have a convenience store closed by. If you look at what's there now, you know, and many replacements with something like this, I think is a, is a step in the right direction.
I guess I also see my neighborhood, and I see that the distance from Lakeside to this neighborhood is a lot closer than most of my district is from a park.
And there's, but there's a different scenario you've got there, Councilman. Lakeside is a recreational center and a golf course. That is not what this particular park is all about. Lakeside is a building, it's a recreational center. It's a different goal for what is being carried out at Lakeside.
I think this is a playground.
Right.
There is a playground at Lakeside, because I go to Lakeside, that's where the first T is.
And you, you got...
I'm there quite often.
You got different goals and different needs for a Lakeside than you have for a park like this. There's a difference in those things.
Mr. Chairman, you asked a couple of questions about the plans and the cause. Mr. Sibley, if you don't mind, can offer what information we have so far to provide some clarification to the council in terms of the park? Shelley.
Dale, one thing I have to give you a credit, you always bring your A-game.
I've heard you have to in this room, Mr. Shine.
When we first began to talk about the possibility of a park on Murphy Street, we went, we put together a budget, and I think we presented it too young, and we recent it out recently. This is a conceptual drawing of what we might do there that's included in this $220,000 budget. That budget also includes property acquisition as well as the construction of this area. Malcolm did say to me that he did not believe, we are doing two types of property acquisition here. We're doing a seizure on some of the property, and then we're having to expropriate in others, and that's all that has to do with titles and the reason we're doing it that way. We had budgeted originally about $62,000 for property acquisitions. Malcolm does think we're gonna be able to do that for about half that cost. So, that would give us the rest of that money to develop what you see on this plan. And basically, it's what you see in a lot of neighborhood parks or pocket parks, an 800 linear feet walking trail, picnic pavilion, playground, basketball court, and a lot of open green space play area. I will say, you know, we're always concerned too about maintenance and maintenance costs, but because this property and the way it's owned, it has not been maintained. And if it is being maintained, it's being maintained at our cost already, just by a different department, because Dorothy's having to maintain it because it's been expropriated. So, we're maintaining it, maybe not as often as we will when it's a park, but you've gotta remember, it's a cost to the city already because they are expropriated pieces of property.
About in addition to the cost?
So.
Are there other parks of similar size and design in the city, or would this kinda be a first, or maybe a new trend?
You have a lot of these.
Coleman College Park, maybe?
Coleman College, you have one over on Wendy Lane in Anderson Island.
We have one right by Corby's Golf Course, actually.
And...
It has, yeah, Waterside on Greg Street.
And Coleman College is a little bit better than this because it's in this district.
Honestly, Cedar Grove Park is, is sort of that way. It's got a ball field and some playground equipment. That's basically a little pocket parks. We have one out, way out of town and underneath the water tower, Jacoby Ware. It's about like this. Just, it was residential lots that were given to the city, turned into a park. Atkins Park, lot like this. So, I mean, there's several of what we call pocket or what we describe as neighborhood parks. Okay?
Thank you, Shelley. Any additional discussion?
I ask for your support on this project. It's up and it's ready to go, and it's just a step in the process.
Now, you calling for the vote?
I thought we'd already voted.
Mr. Everston and Mr. Oliver Jenkins, please. And that looks like six, yes, one, no.
This is what?
184 is a similar resolution. It authorizes institution of expropriation proceedings against certain described property in connection with the Murphy Street Park Project.
Motion, second. This is motion by Councilman Sam Jenkins, second by Vice Chair. Any discussion? Six, yes, one, no. And Dee, could you have him?
I'm calling him now, Mr. Chairman. Maybe we can turn it on now. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Thompson.
185 authorizes institution of expropriation proceedings against certain property in connection with the Murphy Street Park Project.
Motion, second. Motion by Councilman Sam Jenkins, second by Vice Chair. If there's no discussion, please vote. Six, yes, one, no.
Thank you.
186 authorizes the submission of the 2014 through 2018 consolidated plan and the 2014 annual action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Land Development.
Second. Motion by Councilman Sam Jenkins, second by Vice Chair. Any discussion? Not, please vote. And you can turn in your book reports on that plan to the chairman.
Wow.
187, yes.
I'm waiting for my executive summary.
Yeah.
187 authorizes the mayor to execute a resolution of concurrent support and recommendation for Amtrak passenger rail service in North Louisiana and otherwise providing with respect to...
Second. Motion by Councilman Sam Jenkins, second by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. Any discussion?
Yeah, well, not really a discussion, but just a comment. Dale, I was looking for you to get State Representative Royal Rail down here to give us a report. You know, he's an expert in transportation matters, I think, and was brought to our...
I would just like to say that Arthur is quite enthusiastic about the opportunity to be riding a train one day. I still have no comment yesterday.
You mean again, I think?
187, yes.
Not that, Arthur. That is Arthur Jenkins.
Oh.
My son is...
I'm sorry, I thought you said...
We're all Arthur, too. Yes.
I named him after.
Mr. Thompson, hurry.
180 authorizes the mayor to waive background check fees for high school students and...
Second. Motion by Vice Chair, second by Councilman Everston.
I think it's...
Please vote.
Thank you, Mr. Shine.
I'm glad I'm in the main, agree all the time.
189 declares the city's interest in certain adjudicated properties as surplus.
Second. Motion by Councilman Sam Jenkins, second by the Vice Chair. Please vote. Seven, yes.
190 also declares the city's interest in certain adjudicated properties as surplus.
Second. Motion by Councilman Sam Jenkins, second by Vice Chair. Please vote. Seven, yes.
Chairman, there are two matters that were added to the agenda that can be considered at this time for adoption. One is Resolution 193, a resolution suspending the effect of certain provisions of Chapter 10 and Chapter 106 of the Code relative to the unseen and otherwise...
Second. Motion by the Vice Chair, second by Councilwoman McCullough. Any discussion? If not, please vote. Seven, yes. And I think the Vice Chair was at unseen, wasn't he?
The next one is Resolution 195.
I didn't see him there.
Mr. Chairman, councilmembers, just, I'm not sure if everyone is familiar with unseen. Councilman Everston, I know it says a good business, it's concentrated in your district. Would you wanna give us a...
Sure. Sure. Thing, unseen is a program, a series of events that will last for a year. It is put on in the Shreveport Common area and was funded, a grant that has several partners, both national and local funders, who are in partnership with Shreveport Regional Arts Council and the city of Shreveport, putting on this series of events that is meant to highlight the culture of the area and meant to attract a diverse population that is sometimes uncommon at these type of events. You know, sometimes we think of arts events as really appealing to a similar audience. Over and over again, this is meant to really bring a lot of new people in, celebrate different types of talent and different types of art, and what it'll do is bring in some very notable national artists who will have a month-long residency in Shreveport, working on a project that they will then unveil at the end of the month, and there will be a party around that event. So, this first one was, was a group of experimental musicians that came in from across the country, including a group called The Residents, who are a Shreveport collective of artists who've been producing work for about forty years now across the country and internationally. And, and it will continue to grow with a number of other artists. I know Brady Blade and his band that features some very high-profile members, like Dave Matthews and Jacob Dillon, will be performing in January. There's other artists from Visual to artists, there's a group from New Orleans who are right now working on a musical house. So, it's a house that is reconstructed and meant to play and create music that will be in place where people are encouraged to come down and play the house. So, it's a sort of a historic house. It's something that they've done as an art installation in New Orleans, it's been very popular. They'll be coming, everything from that to some, Erika Badu, who's a very well-known artist, who will hopefully be the artist featured the month that will be celebrated for Allen Day. So, there's a great deal of thought that's been put into this. The organizer of the event is Brandon Oldenburg from Moonbot Studios, who has, is the artistic director, I should say, and has done a really good job of working with a local team of volunteers to make sure that this is a diverse, inclusive, and uncommon type of event to take place in the Shreveport Common.
The activity is in his district, but, Mr. Mayor, I think it will enhance the whole city and not only the whole city, but the kinda North Louisiana area, because, you know, this is what they're kinda hoping to draw from, so, you know.
Thank you, Jeff, Mr. Vice Chairman. The councilmembers just wanted to make sure that all councilmembers were aware and that for those folks out there in the community or in the audience, who you were referring to unseen, to have some idea of knowing exactly what we're talking about, and another great addition to the collective effort that's underway to continue to grow the cultural economy of Shreveport and Northwest Louisiana. You know, it's amazing the kind of feedback that we get around the region and around the country about some of the outstanding things that this council, previous council, and the commission, and lots of folks have been involved in that are helping to continue to make this a very desirable place to go. It feeds right into the kinda things that got kicked off on Sunday over at Tour Affair down on Line Avenue, where our own Bill Joyce held a signing for his and Brandon's and the folks over at Moonbot's latest creation, the Mistevians. Here, and then just today alone, they've been featured on the Today Show and the most recent Apple Talk, all emanating right here from the corner of Kings Highway and Mansfield Road, and it continues to connect and feed off itself and help us manage to be able to keep the genius that emanates from here still here and puts us in a posture where we're attracting folks from around the country and around the world to come and see what's happening in Shreveport. So, thank you all for your continued support.
All right, Mr. Thompson, back to you.
Resolution 195 will amend and reenact Resolution Number 97 of 2012, which authorize expenditure of citywide street improvement program funds for certain streets in Council District G by adding panes, road concrete, replacing it to the...
Motion by Councilman Sam Jenkins, second by Councilman Everston. Any discussion? Not, please vote. Councilwoman McCullough. Seven, yes.
Quick question, did we actually vote on 194?
Yes, sir.
You just read 195, that's why I'm asking the question.
193 and 195.
I think you need 194.
I think it was 194. Yeah, I didn't have a note on it either.
You would have voted on that first.
See, what happened, we were about to say, you read it, then we started talking about it, then we didn't vote on it, then we went...
195.
We hadn't voted 194 yet, I don't believe, for the record.
We voted on unseen, and we voted on...
Maybe having it...
So, we skipped the...
You may have to take a little pay cut from Mr. Thompson.
Marking here, there.
We voted on 193. 193, and this last one.
Right, 95.
All right, move on 194.
Well, you used to read it in the record first.
You didn't read it in the record.
He may have actually read it in the record.
194 has to be introduced, it was added on it.
That's what, that's what I think the Vice Chairman...
Yeah, it's the Olive Street Ministry.
Just meant to...
194 cannot be adopted today, it will be read under introduction of resolutions.
Okay, there's, that may be the answer to the question.
All right.
You started to read it.
And, Mr. Thompson, I believe we are at introduction of resolutions at this point.
On introduction of resolutions, we have 192 that was on the agenda and 194 that was added to the agenda.
So, move.
192 will authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with J.P. Morgan Chase Bank for the financing of vehicles and equipment, and 194 is a resolution ratifying the use of certain equipment by Olive Street Ministries and otherwise providing respect there, too.
Motion by the Vice Chair, and who is my second?
I'll be seconding that.
Second by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. If there's no discussion, please vote. Seven, yes.
Chairman, we're now in introduction of ordinances, not to be adopted prior to November the 12th. 136 will close in a bend in a portion of Bannon Street between Baker Street and Douglas Street, located in Section 37. 137 will close in a bend in a portion of Benson Court Alley between Baker Street and Douglas Street, located in Section 37. 138 will close in a bend in the ten-foot-wide alley between Kemper Street and East 72nd Street, west of Line Avenue, in the Cedar Grove subdivision, located in Section 25. 139 declares a public servitude on certain adjudicated properties. 140 will amend the 2013 general fund budget and appropriate the funds authorized therein. 141 is examining matter C-73-13, it amends Chapter 106 of the Code by rezoning property located on the southeast corner of Yuri Drive and Arthur Avenue, from SPI 3B1 Commercial Carrot overlay buffer business district to SPI 3E B1 Commercial Carrot overlay buffer business extended-use district, limited to a veterinary clinic for household pets... Business Extended Use District, limited to a veterinary clinic for household pets, small animals only. 142 is a zoning matter C-74-13, it amends Chapter 106 of the Code by reselling property located on the northwest corner of East 74th Street and Lion Avenue, from B2 Neighborhood Business District to R1H Urban One Family Residence District.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sibyl.
Yesterday, I believe Councilman Sam Jenkins wanted to see a map on 136, 137, the Millennium Project. Malcolm is prepared to, because I think you want to be sure that the through streets were not being closed.
And I did take Councilman Shine's recommendation. I went down today and did a drive-through during the daylight, Mr. Mayor.
Did you eat lunch at the new restaurant?
No, no, I didn't have time for lunch today.
You can take me tomorrow.
I'm still waiting on Councilman Shine's meal.
And I want to say, I'm all for this now, I'm not against this.
Yeah, totally understand. It's been a while since we discussed it, and so it's, I think, a very good question that you asked yesterday to make sure that we all.
We can't see this on our monitors, so can you kind of talk us through what's on the overhead?
Chairman, if you don't mind, Malcolm, before you start, just to recap for the council and for the audience in general, this is the next phase of our effort that started. I think we made the initial announcement on this in staff recruitment along Dale, April of 2008. One of the things that we learned was that until you make sure you get all the pieces together, lined up and connected, you might want to hold off on your announcement. But it's been an ongoing effort. The initial phase of this is, is in place and has been functioning and operating and doing quite well. There is a larger vision that this represents the next step of. We've had a few hitches and halts in terms of being able to try and effectively piece and parcel the property together to make it happen, but it's all moved along at what we think is an acceptable pace. It's also been assisted and helped by an EDA grant that we were able to secure from the federal government with the assistance of Senator Andrew and other members of our federal delegation for about one-plus million dollars to help us address some of the infrastructure issues that are there. And it represents, again, an opportunity to continue this vision towards making the west side of downtown a hub of lots of activity that generates jobs, that generates opportunity, and that continues to allow us to be able to grow our economy. So with that, Malcolm.
The, the two public dedications proposing to be closed and abandoned are right here and right here. This is the existing Millennium facility. The city of Shreveport owns all of the adjacent property to these two public dedications. We own all of this, we own all of this, and we own this. And so we're requesting to close and abandon these so that this can be replatted into a single parcel.
I see we do have, there's Travis Street that will bring you out of downtown and take you over to Pete Harris, and then there's Sprague Street that will take you from downtown to Pete Harris also.
As well as Cattle.
And Cattle.
Yes, so you've got those, right.
All right, okay. All right.
Together, okay.
Thank you much.
Thank you, Malcolm.
Sure.
Chairman, we need a motion and a second to introduce ordinances.
Shall move, Mr. Chairman. Motion by the vice chair, second by Councilman Everson. Any further discussion? Please vote. And that is seven yes.
Chairman, we're now in the ordinances on second reading and filed passage. 116 amends the 2013 capital project fund budget. This will reconcile the difference between famous and the accounting that was done at the end of the year.
Second. Motion by the chair, second by the vice chair. Any discussion? Not, please vote. Seven yes.
117 amends the 2013 capital improvements budget. This will appropriate a million dollars for the Hursey D. Wilson project. There is one amendment. The amendment states the intent of the council to replace this million dollars when the second bond sale occurs.
Shall move.
Second.
On the amendment?
Yes, on the amendment.
Okay. Motion by Councilwoman McCullough, second by Councilman Sam Jenkins on the amendment. Any discussion? If not, please vote. That is seven yes on the amendment.
And so now, make a motion.
We have a motion on the ordinances amendment.
Second.
Discussion?
Motion by Councilwoman McCullough as amended, second by Councilman Sam Jenkins, Councilman Oliver Jenkins.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to postpone until we're complete with engineering.
I will second that.
And my, my issue is, we, it was clear yesterday that they think it'll be done in thirty days?
No, two weeks.
Then if it's ready in two weeks, I'd be happy to support it two weeks from now, but if it ends up taking two or three more months and there's another project that becomes a higher priority, I would like the opportunity to at least explore that.
That's my reasoning.
Not sure everybody has to support it. The project was ready to go, I'd support it today. It's not, and I'd like to wait to vote on this until the project is ready.
Question, do we have something on the horizon that's, might come up?
Well, there's, there are several other projects that could move forward that engineering's been already done, that is waiting on the second bond issue for, for funding.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second on the substitute motion.
Substitute motion, I have.
What's your, what's your desire, Councilwoman?
No, I'm, I'm not supporting the substitute motion.
Okay. All right. We have, let's vote on the substitute motion.
Wait, for clarification, the substitute motion.
It's just to postpone.
Is to postpone until the engineering is complete?
That's correct.
Okay. So if the engineering is complete in ten days, it'll be just on our next.
It'll be on our next agenda.
Right. That's woman McCullough. That is five yes, T no.
Just for the record, the amendment was adopted, so the amendment will be, what you'll be voting on the next time?
Next two weeks.
Whenever.
Whenever it expires.
Whenever we decide to bring it back up?
Chairman, that's all that we have on the regular agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there any table legislation to come off today?
You know, none, Mr. Chairman.
He was not on record, we thought maybe he was going. He's got something in there, he's going through a bunch of papers.
He was finishing up his clerk's report. We have no property standards.
Way, way up.
We have no ABO appeals, we have no MPC or zoning board appeals. At this time, are there any reports from officers, boards, or committees? Councilman Senji.
You're going to yield the age this time?
Certainly, you're going to yield the age. Mr. Chairman, we need to schedule a Audit and Finance Committee meeting. We've had several reports that have been issued from our auditors, and we need to come together and review them. I'm not sure, I was, the members of that committee, myself, and you, Mr. Chairman, Councilman Everson, and Councilwoman McCullough, may need to check our calendars to see if we can come up with an agreeable date. Do you wish to do it maybe before the next council meeting? I mean, on the day of the next council meeting?
Why don't you email out some possible days and let's see where we can get agreement on, and if we can do it before the next council meeting, I think that'd be great.
Okay, I'm going to turn that over to Ms. Stewart, excellent looking for that for us, coordinate a meeting of the Audit and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilman Oliver Jenkins.
As discussed yesterday, proposing a public safety, or a public safety meeting will be scheduled for 3:00 PM this Thursday. I've had one regret, but I think we're good to go on our, on that piece, that was fine. So I hope to see everybody else there. I believe Jackie has either made an overture to the taxi group?
Yes.
If we hear anything back from them?
They're going to get back with me tomorrow.
Okay. So at a minimum, we'll have the issue of the lounges request for Sunday openings, and maybe on that agenda, we hope to have session number two with regard to the taxi cab and the insurance premiums.
And if we could, I'd like to add another item to the discussion, just some new information I've received and some discussion about the recently passed gate ordinance.
We'll certainly have that. I encourage you to join us, though not a member, if you have an item that you'd like to be discussed there, if you could be there to present it, that would be quite helpful.
And Mr. Chairman, this is to Chairman Oliver Jenkins, when we start discussing about the lounges being open on a Sunday, I might have to excuse myself here.
We're going to understand clearly on which side of the fence we stand.
Doesn't mean you have to go, Councilman Shine.
Councilman Everson.
Also, I'd like to make sure that everyone knows that we did schedule the Riverfront Before Committee meeting for Tuesday, the 29th, at 1:30. So we discussed that yesterday, just confirming that today.
Jackie, you got that now.
Mr. Everson, is there anything particularly you need from, from the administration?
I think that you've provided the materials we need, I don't think I need anything additional. So thanks for asking.
Let me, in relation to that, have we notified?
The applicants through the, do we have a database of those, Jackie, that we could notify? The applicants for the Civic Corporations Fund?
I have the numbers.
Okay, well, if we could, if we could include them in the notification, I think that'd be.
Right, right, I wish we could call or maybe send out a correspondence, so we won't have anybody coming up saying, you know, I didn't know about it.
Absolutely.
And that kind of stuff.
We've got a week, so hopefully that'll give us time to make sure that they're notified. Most of them have provided email addresses, so that should be, we should be able to just attach them to that. If not, I know that when Jackie sends out the public notice, we'll each get it. So if you have a rare group that you think may, may not have been attached on there when you see it go out, I feel, I would encourage you to share it with them, and I'll do the same.
Please do, Jackie, if any emails or, any way you know how to contact them personally, because this is, this is very, very important to some of them. I mean, they, this is what they look for from year to year, and we just want to make sure that, that, that they are notified.
Yes.
But I'll lay it on Mr. Thompson if it's, if you have any problems.
And then another.
For all of them.
Always available for blame. And another update, the, for a different committee, the Infrastructure Committee some time ago approved, and the council followed suit in approving, the pavement management system, and so I wanted to give you all a brief update. The consultants who are working on the pavement management system did have an opportunity to do a training session with our engineers and go over what information is already in that system and what's left to be put in there. They've collected all of the data at this point, they've scanned the entire city, meaning they've driven every street and road that belongs to the city and take collected information, collected pavement information, information about what sort of assets were on that as far as street lights, curbing, you know, sidewalks, different things like that, street signs, everything like that. So all that information has been gathered. It's now in the phase where it's being processed and added into the pavement management system, and we got a little bit of a preview of how that will work. I was very pleased with it, it, I believe everyone, when that is completed, will be very pleased with it. It's exactly what we had asked for and hoped for. But one thing that I will ask, if any council member has in mind a way that you might like to search streets information in the future, this is the time now to kind of ask for that so we can build it into the system, so that we can generate the reports that are helpful. So if you have something that you think might be unusual, or that might be unique to your district, let us know, we'll share that with the developers. What occurs to me is, having seen Mr. Harris's email this week about pavement, the asphalt, the annual asphalt overlay program, how soon will we be able to use this database to ascertain what our highest priorities are? The data last week was at about sixty-five to seventy percent processed and entered, so there's still about thirty percent left, and I believe that that may not be including the entirety of the assets. So I think the expectation is before the end of the year, though I'm not sure that it would be before the next month. So, you know, it'll be, we have a few more weeks left. But at that time, and I'm happy to go with Stan if the specific question is, once that data's in there, will we be able to evaluate on a, you know, compare the degradation of one street in the, like, if I ask for a run of, okay, we're looking at asphalt, tell me what my most degraded street per this system? You'll be able to look at what's called a PCI number, and PCI Pavement Condition Index. That is a number that is sort of relative to the community, so it's based on the overall makeup of your streets. And what's in there now, and the difference between the raw information and the processed information, is that the raw information is data points, you know, more than you could possibly look at to gather information. So what it's done is it's averaging in and segmented stretches of road, it's averaging in all those data points so that you get a real accurate feel for the entirety of it as opposed to just one spot. So you may have two or three potholes on a street, but the rest of that street is a great, well-constructed street that's got a long time in it. What they do is they average it out so that you will know the difference between those two things. And so they're in the, like I said, they're in the process of doing that. Will it be ready for the allocation of your 2013 asphalt overlay? Probably not, you know, but for your 2014, most certainly.
Right. Our, our intent is to have that available for, for next year, for the most part, at least it'd been a working document where we can actually use it. What we want to do is not only with the PCI, the Pavement Condition Index, that's just looking at the condition of the, of the street. What you also want to include in there is the amount of traffic, because what we want to be able to do is create a index or a number that rates every street in the city. That way you'll have a comparable index as to what condition what street is as relative to another street.
And that's very important, the amount of traffic.
Right.
That's going to be important.
If that becomes a part of the factor when we, when we make decisions about what streets get improved.
That's correct.
And one of the things that I think was really interesting about this, that I didn't even know if I realized this until we were in there, is that you are able to, so this will also identify what type of work is needed for, for each of the street improvements, as well as when that work is done, how much it will increase it and how long that increased street quality will last. And so it will give you the ability also to tie into budgeting and materials so that you can have an estimate for the cost to redo a street, you know, by, by a simple query on the, on the system as opposed to having to send somebody out there and collect that information and all of that. It's, it'll, it'll give you a generalized estimate just as part of the search. So cities, for instance, I believe El Paso was one that they referenced that provides a, a high level of public access to their, to their system. And in El Paso, a citizen, any citizen can log on to that, to that computer program, punch in their address, and it'll tell them, even if their neighborhood just got constructed and there's no anticipated work on that thing for thirty years, it'll tell you, in forty years, your street's being redone. But if you live on an older street and you're in a, you know, an area where you think you need work in the next year or two, you can log on to that system and it'll say, in three years, we plan to do an overlay, or in five years, we plan to reconstruct the entire street. They've got every single street in their city laid out when it is expected to have work on it for decades to come. So that's what the capability of a system like this, now, does it pay for it? No, you've got to still come up with your own budget. No, you've got to still come up with your own budget. But obviously, it does help you put those resources in a way where you can spend, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars keeping a street at an A-plus level street so that it doesn't get to the point where you have to spend a few million dollars to rebuild it. So, it is a very, very valuable system. I think the council will be really pleased with it when the results are final.
And the other thing that the system will provide to council, and the mayor's office as well, it'll give us an idea of what our total backlog in terms of street costs actually are. And with that number, then we can develop a strategy on how we want to actually approach our streets in the future.
Thank you, Stan. Thank you, Councilman Emerson. All right. I believe that brings us to what is often the highlight of our meeting, and that is the clerk's report, Mr. Thompson.
Wow!
Well, I gave you a report yesterday. We've got the same report we had yesterday, except that it was Mr. ... It was BAC 133-13, 30, 40, 9, Martin Luther King. The letter's on my desk to put that on the agenda for the next meeting. It will be out tomorrow, November the 12th.
All right. Is there a motion for the council to resolve?
Motion by the vice chair, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. I'm sure there's no discussion, so let's vote.
So, Oliver Jenkins?
Seven, yes. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion by the vice chair, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. There's no discussion, please vote.
Seven, yes. Mr. Mayor, any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests towards city business?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, as usual, all those folks who managed to be able to take time from busy schedule to be here in person, or watch it by Comcast or Ustream, we consider to be special guests and certainly appreciate their time and attention. Want to also, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, take an opportunity to extend upon an earlier reference and express kudos and congratulations to Bill Joyce and Brandon Oldenburg and all the folks over at Moonbox Studios. The BOTS, I guess, is what they refer themselves. Sunday represented the Shreveport unveiling of the latest creation from that group, and it's referred to as the Mischievians, and has gotten some very positive reviews at this point, continues to represent an opportunity to be able to share homegrown, developed genius with the rest of the world and shine a very positive light, and ultimately provide opportunity for folks to be able to find opportunity, to be able to find a job, or to start a business, or have a chance to further broaden their insight and understanding of technology. But it's very exciting to have those kind of things situated right here within Shreveport. And I also take this opportunity to let the council know, as well as the general community, that this coming Friday, we'll have the Annual Minority Business Expo luncheon, award luncheon that will take place here in downtown Shreveport. You have a gentleman with Chase Bank, a Mr. Irvin L. Williams, who will serve as this year's featured speaker. He is the district manager for Northwest Louisiana. That event's going to take place Friday at 11:30 at the Eldorado Resort Casino on Clive Fan Parkway, and encourage all those who are interested to come out and participate. And for those who are looking to network, gain information on opportunity, as well as to connect with other individuals who may be attempting to pursue their own entrepreneurial dreams, there is a Minority Business Expo that's sponsored by the Shreveport Boja African-American Chamber that's going to be held on Saturday. It's an event that leads up to the four o'clock Shreveport Classic, so you can come in for the Shreveport Classic, have a chance to come out and connect and network at the Shreveport Convention Center. It's all entirely free. There are a network of great sponsors who helped to step forward and make that possible. Candy Burles, a renowned musician and entrepreneur from Atlanta, will be the special guest, sharing some of her insight and wisdom in terms of her own business endeavors. But there will be lots of companies and groups and organizations represented all there to help connect individuals to information and to opportunity, and certainly encourage those who can to come and participate. As I mentioned earlier, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, we will have our first collegiate game this year for this season, one of the two scheduled for Independence Stadium this season. We're anxious to welcome the good folks from Jackson State University and from Prairie View A&amp;M over in Texas, and it will lead up to the great night of one of the things happening down at the Louisiana State Fair. So, certainly encourage any and all who are interested in coming out. Also, want to commend, Mr. Chairman, all of the various neighborhood groups, community block organizations across the city who got involved in Shreveport Boja Night Out earlier this month. It was a great evening, kind of a mixed experience, and it seemed as if the rain seemed to follow me from location to location, but it always appeared to stop raining as soon as I left. So, I had a little bit of a slip rock dimension going to some aspects of our visits, but from what I heard, lots of folks had a great time all around the city, and certainly the temperatures were welcomed and cool and had a great time. And so, we thank all those folks out there who were engaged and participated. Also, want to commend council members Jenkins and Emerson, as well as Sam Jenkins. I had the opportunity here within the past week to attend several of the Neighborhood Association meetings that were going on across the city. There's always something happening within our various neighborhoods, and the city is always connected from an administrative standpoint, from the mayor's office and the various departments, and our first responders and fire police. But it's always great to see our council members there, engaged and connected and dialoguing, sharing with our citizens, and giving us a chance to be able to truly make our city a collection, collaboration of great neighborhoods that ultimately leads us down a path that makes us a great city. So, thank you all for your engagement, for your commitment, and for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any additional comments from council members at this time?
I'll just say one. Apparently, he had a very different experience than I did on my night out. I went from pouring down rain to pouring down rain to pouring down rain. And it was pretty constant every place I showed up. I need to get on the sunny side somehow.
Well, we have communications from the mayor.
We're at council communication.
Council communication. I have... I'd like to ask the mayor and his administration a couple of questions. Yeah, regarding the Hershey D. Wilson project. It's my understanding that this particular project laid on the mayor's desk for three months prior to W.T. and Associates being selected for design, and it's also been held up two years. And of course, I was notified on my birthday, August 30th, that W.T. and Associates was fired. And of course, I say thank you again for that. I'm just not too familiar with streets being constructed or redesigned taking this long. I don't know really what's going on, but when I received the letter on my birthday that W.T. and Associates had been fired after two years of design, that was August 30th, I was then informed that it would take 30 days, 30 days from August 30th, that gave you September 30th, for the city to complete the design. And of course, when I inquired about it with Ron Norwood, and I also spoke with you, Oliver, because, you know, you had agreed to loan me a million dollars, which you took back, an additional 30 days was added for design. And so, I was also being told by the Engineering Department at the same time, after the $1 million was taken back, that we need to know that you have the money in order to move forward with bidding. And so, that was my purpose today of asking this council to support me in making a loan, and I was thinking similar to the loan that was made by, through Barbara Featherstone's department, an amount of $300,000 that was taken from my district as a sewer project. And I've asked there simply for an update on the return and the legislation of that money being returned back to District A. Of course, I don't have that yet, so the idea and the fact that the loan is nothing new, and it shouldn't be impossible. And that was my reason for being in pursuit of seeking the loan, because the Engineering Department, Councilman Shine, told me that they needed to know that I had the money, Reverend Mays, in order to move forward with bidding. So, that was the purpose of me bringing that before this council. And of course, Mustafa came before us yesterday. Mustafa, you still here?
I'm here.
Which I've never discussed, the Hershey D. Wilson project with Mustafa since it's been on the table. I mean, it was new to me yesterday for him to come forward and provide any information. And those of you that were here, you expressed that... I mean, he expressed, he told you, Oliver, because you inquired, that it would be two weeks before the design would be complete by the city. And of course, I know when it came to the table today, Oliver, Mayor Glover, it was 30 days. So, I wanted some clarification, because according to Councilman Shine, at the beginning, when I once made the statement, "At the end of the day, the mayor makes the call." But I was corrected to, and led to believe that at the beginning and at the end of the day, it's the mayor that makes the call. And so, since this has been ongoing for almost three years, like no other projects, because when Hershey D. Wilson came to the table, no other projects were on the table. As a matter of fact, if you all recall, my fellow council persons, you had never identified any streets in your district. Therefore, I couldn't move forward with Hershey D. Wilson almost three years ago. So, a lot of your projects are up and moving right now. Again, I'm addressing this with you, Mayor Glover, as well as your administration. A lot of your projects have gone through design, gone up for bid, and they're now moving. My concern is, and I explained and expressed to you why it was that I asked to borrow the million dollars that was taken back by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. If I'm being told by the mayor's administration, and I was told this two or three times, Oliver, we need to know that you have the money before we move forward, and at the same time, the time is constantly being pushed back, Mayor Glover, I really have some concerns, and I really need your attention at this point. I mean, as far as W.T. and Associates, that's right on the bridge. It's been two years. We're down to the design since the city has gotten it, 60 days. Now, we're down to an additional two weeks. And so, it's been suggested by this council today that, you know, we looked at... I looked at making that loan within the next two weeks, which is when the city says that the design would be complete. You know, I need something from the mayor, Councilman Shine, to assure me within two weeks that the design is going to be complete. And then, I need some assurance that after the design is complete, like other projects, the bidding process would go forth, so then the construction could go forth. I need to hear from my mayor and his administration. I need to be assured that this project will be moving forward as soon as possible, and that I will be in position in the next two weeks at our next council meeting to borrow the $1 million to move forward.
Mr. Chairman?
Mayor Glover.
Councilwoman, I sense, and I feel, and I appreciate your frustration. Your frustration, however, is focused primarily on Hershey D. Wilson Street. My frustration is focused on the balance of the city of Shreveport, because there are streets all over the city, as I have said many times before now, that we don't need as... You just heard Councilman Emerson very eloquently detail the status and the progress that we're making with regard to the pavement management system work. That's going to be extremely helpful, and it's going to be a great tool. But as I have said, and as staff has said, when it comes to the first hundred-plus million dollars worth of street needs here in the city of Shreveport, we don't need anything but a dashboard and a seat of the pants of review and survey to know exactly where those needs and those issues and those challenges are, whether it's Lynnwood, Juella, Hollywood, Piermont, or what have you, that list goes on. You have been, without question, very laser-like in your focus and your desire to address Hershey D. Wilson. We have attempted to support and to facilitate that. When you reference the selection of the engineer process, I take very seriously my duty and responsibility to review the work that has been done by the Architects and Engineers Selection Committee, to send me their three top choices out of whatever number of companies may have submitted to offer professional service for that particular project. So, I can't comment right now in terms of the length of time for the selection. Ultimately, the selection that was made was one that, based upon all indications that had been given to me, that you and other members of this council were in support of, which was something that I was pleased to know. I believe they were also the number-one selection of the Architects and Engineering Selection Committee. The unfortunate reality is, however, is that that particular group has failed to fulfill, and that is an absolute inescapable truth of this situation. The group of individuals given the duty, responsibility, and opportunity to engineer and design the Hershey D. Williams Street reconstruction failed to fulfill substantially, if not overwhelmingly, the obligations that they had under the contract that they entered into with the city of Shreveport. We attempted, on numerous occasions, to try and show the kind of patience that we thought was necessary in order to try and allow them to be able to have the additional time, the additional leeway, the additional consideration in order to be able to complete their work. Ultimately, they were not able to produce. It became necessary at that point in time, if we wanted to see any progress, an advancement of this issue, that we needed to make a change. And so, you are, in fact, correct. We did relieve them of their duties. And at that point, I think we discussed the potential options with you, and one that was the most timely was to bring the work that had been done in-house and then task outside and beyond the scope of the contract, staff, engineers, with the responsibility of finishing this work, in addition to what it is that they already have the duty and obligation to do based upon their other responsibilities. And then, we would also, after that, make a determination what it is that we would do in order to try and seek redress against W.T. and Associates for failing to have effectively fulfilled the terms of the contract, understanding that what we wanted to do was to put ourselves in a position to have that work done and to be in a position to be able to go to bid. That has been a timeframe that I think has been pretty much adhered to. The intent of the extendable discussion up to this point, I think, is shared with both you and the members of the council on yesterday and today, was that we think that we are within a two-week-to-month-long timeframe before those engineering and design documents are ready, which in turn gives us the ability to be able to go out for bid. In order to be able to go out for bid, we actually have to have funding in line that's been appropriated by this council, as our charter calls for, in order to be able to facilitate that. And that is a process to which you and your colleagues just engaged here over the last hour.
Oliver, you listening?
I'm very clear on what's going on, and I don't believe that any action that I've taken that doesn't exactly support what the mayor is discussing now.
Let me ask this. You went from, see here again, and that's what... Please let me interrupt, because of the timeframe, Mayor Glover. See, Mustafa said, well, actually, all... See, Mustafa said, well, actually, August 30th, Ron Norwood said four weeks. Then at the following city council meeting, he gave me another four weeks. And then in today's meet, yesterday's meeting, Mustafa said two weeks. Oliver said thirty days. You just said two weeks plus sixty days. So I'm just concerned that it's being bumped around, the time is being pushed back. And I know you had a lot of respect for my father, from what I know, not based on what other people know. And so, I know you spoke very highly of the project, and I know it's something that I felt like you were interested in. I hope so. But I'm just concerned that every time inquiries are made about it, you know, it's this timeframe, and, you know, like I said, other projects have gone forth and are being constructed at this time. And so, I mean, it's the same process, and if the city has it now, and the city says that we're going to take it and we're going to do it, and then every time, the same, the same thing that you took me through with WT, I'm about to go through that with the city. And I'm just not comfortable with that. I mean, I, I kind of had trust in my mayor and his administration, and I kind of believe in my mayor and his administration. I mean, I believe in the fact that you said this is something that should be, that Hershey D. Wilson is one of the worst streets on, well, really, in the city of Shreveport. It really is, to be perfectly honest. Not making up a lie, but Ms. Green, Ms. Woodley walked next door to me yesterday. She knocked her car out of line on Audrey Lane. But this money, Hershey D. Wilson, is bond money. This is not special street revenue money. This is not concrete pavement money. This has nothing to do with asphalt money. This is money that was brought to the table, Ms. Green. And Hershey D. Wilson is not the only street that I asked for. I asked for Booker T. Washington, the retirement community right across from Booker T. Washington, also as a part of my bond, the three million dollars to be, and I was assured yesterday by the mayor's administration that they were going to move forward with that as soon as possible, in the presence of Stan Harris, who, he's not here now. So you're telling me that you're going to move forward? What's that? Is that correct, Stan? He was about to move forward with Carver's Place across from Booker T. And of course, Hershey was submitted prior to Carver's Place. So, I don't know what the real politics here is, but my husband often made this statement. It looks like something's rotten in Denmark here. And I'm really depending on my mayor. Well, I have supported, because that was a part of my platform when I came aboard, that I would support my mayor as well as this council. And I have worked and I have sought to do that. And I need that same support from you as far as this goes. Hershey D. Wilson is not the only street, Ms. Green. I have asked for several other streets under other programs. I have tried to reveal other pots of money other than the little three million dollars that was thrown up in the air. Right now, I'm just becoming not frustrated. I am becoming disappointed at the mayor and his administration and the attitude that they have taken toward this project and move forward with other projects that come under the bond issue. And so, that's where I am. I just needed to express that, and for the record, that needed to be, I wanted to express that for the record. I mean, I'm not Hershey D. Wilson. My daddy was very temperamental. I'm not him. I'm those Marie Wilson McCullough, and I have patience. And that's what I've tried to do, is be very patient. And I've really tried to depend and trust in my mayor as well as his administration on this project. Thank you so much.
Do you have to finish your comments?
Oh, absolutely, Mr. Chairman. And Councilwomen, and members of the council, please understand that while I have an appreciation for the various personalities and what have you involved in this situation, Councilwoman McCullough, I want you to understand, this has absolutely nothing at all to do with you or your father or any other personality. What you have in this situation is, again, as I go back, a failure to perform on the part of the team of professionals who were selected to engineer and design this project, a direction on the part of this administration to have staff do that which we had contracted with a private entity to do, without consideration at this point in terms of how we make ourselves whole with that private entity. That work is being done, and it's being done at the expense of work that these individuals would otherwise be obligated to do towards the facilitation of other projects across the city of Shreveport. In addition to that, you here today, by the instrument that was before this council, asked for the appropriation of dollars so that once the engineering and design is complete, that we're in a position to be able to go to bid. The administration supports you in that position. The one thing I cannot do from this particular post, nor have I been elected to do, is to go around and push any of those buttons. If I were, there would be a myriad of decisions that would have gone a different way.
But what about in engineering? Can you push buttons in engineering? Because engineering work, work under your direction.
If your colleagues would appropriate this dollar, these dollars, as soon as this work is done, we're prepared to go to bid. What was expressed by Mr. Jenkins today was that he would like for that to happen at the point in time when the absolute certainty of those documents has been delivered. I disagree with that. Unfortunately, five of your colleagues agreed with Mr. Oliver Jenkins, and two agreed, or one in addition to yourself, agreed with your position. But now, I believe that it would be appropriate to go ahead and appropriate those dollars. But you should not confuse my ability to be able to direct the actions of staff with the ability of the council to exercise their legislative authority and duties and responsibilities in the ways and manner, and manner in which they seem to see fit. If that were the case, that would be more than a few things that would have, we would have done differently. But that's the check and the balance that exists within our form of government.
But, 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 but my colleagues are operating based on what your staff is telling them. You know, if, if, if Mustafa come up and say, "Well, it'll be two weeks," well, then what I need, you know, what I need for my mayor to assure me of is that, you know, my employees said that, and that's what's going to be done. But, you know, from what I'm hearing now, there's a possibility in the next two weeks I'll have the same old song.
Councilwoman, what I'm not going to do is to accept, ask my staff and employees of the city of Shreveport to accept any greater degree of responsibility than what they already have for the failure of a group of professionals to effectively perform and fulfill the terms of a contract that they signed. And so, the fact that we are right now doing this work in-house, as opposed to suspending the project and then filing suit against WT and Associates and attempting to seek redress for the money that they've already been paid, and then selecting another company by going through the A and E selection process all over again, means that we're attempting to try and shave what should be, at the very minimum, months, if not years, off of the timeframe necessary in order to be able to move this project forward. The next occasion for this council to meet will not be until the 11th or the 12th of, of November. And so, two weeks from now still finds us within the month of, almost, within the month still of October, certainly within the, the beginning of November. The anticipation is that we would have these documents ready and would have been able to act, had the council chosen to go along with the recommendation. I listened for the discussion and the dialogue to take place as that substitute motion was offered. I think you were asked by Mr. Wood and maybe Mr. Jenkins what your thoughts were, and the only expression was, was that you were against it. Now, we were prepared to engage in further dialogue with regard to the issue, but that's where it was left, and the votes were taken where they were. But I'm not going to sit here and, and absolutely put Oliver Mustafa or any other staffer within the engineering office under any further stress or duress than they already have been by this particular set of circumstances. We expect within two weeks. I'd love for them to come in within a week. But the bottom line, Hershey to go out to bid and begin construction, that needs to be the action of this council, which, again, I cannot push a single button on any one of those seven particular levels over there. I can only offer to you the position and posture that we have right now. Now, if you want to ask that the matter be brought back up and reconsidered, and that that motion have a chance to be fully vetted and debated, that might be the suggestion that you might want to make, so that those types of questions can be asked and addressed. To me, it appears to be only an effort to delay and forestall that which ought to already be done. But again, the council has acted in that particular situation by a vote of five to two. We anticipate having the engineering and design done as quickly as possible. If it happens next week, we'd be able to go out for bid as early as next week. If it happens in a week and a half, we could begin that process as quickly as then. As it stands right now, what we end up doing is completing that, coming back and notifying the council, and then you all end up having to go through the process of putting it back on the agenda again.
I wasn't clear about that. I mean, I was talking about the engineering department. We cannot move forward unless we know that you have the money, and that was why I came to Oliver.
As moving forward, we're going to bid.
Well, even before, before the design was to be completed, I was told, and that's why I reminded Oliver that he made the commitment to District A for his million dollars. They told me before the design could be completed, they needed to know that the money was in place. Oliver agreed to do that, and then I was still held up six weeks. And so, then the, then WT and Associates was fired. And I was told by Ron Norwood that it would only take four weeks to complete the design. That four weeks passed, no communication to me whatsoever as the council or the representative. I inquired about it again in the presence of Oliver Jenkins, and I'm sure he's not going to remember at the very back of this chamber. And he added an additional four weeks, two weeks after August 30th. So that's my concern. It's not that I'm expecting you to put your staff under pressure, but there's a lot of manipulation and finger pointing that's going back and forth. You know, at the end of the day, nobody's responsible for what's going on, or nobody's really responsible at the end of the day for the Hershey D. Wilson project going through. But if it is appropriate, Councilman Corbin, to bring this back up in whatever manner, I would like for it to come back up again and call for a vote, since it's been explained.
As chairman, I'm going to make some comments related to the comments that you've made so far.
And the mayor.
I believe.
And the mayor.
I'm talking to you, Councilwoman McCullough.
Right.
I believe that Mayor Glover has said multiple times that city staff is working diligently on the project that you've requested. When we began to talk about bond funds and how we were going to split up the money, and each council district got three million dollars, you made it clear from the onset, as you stated earlier, you were going to use your entire basket of eggs, if you will, on Hershey D. Wilson Street.
No, that wasn't correct.
The rest, yes.
That's not correct. If you, if you check with engineering, my, my, my three million dollars is going to be divided between Hershey D. Wilson and Carver's Place across from Booker T. It's in line.
I'll finish my comments, and I'll correct that. You are going to use the majority of your three million dollars.
Right.
For a single street in your district.
Right.
The rest of us chose multiple projects, some which were already engineered, some which didn't require engineering, and that's why other projects are moving forward at this time with the monies that are available. There's no conspiracy against a District A project. It's just money's available, project's ready to go, moving forward with that.
Would it be a problem bringing back up?
Now, I'm going to also tell you this. Constituents from your district have contacted me. I don't know if they contacted any other council members.
They've contacted me as well for the Hershey D. Wilson project.
They have contacted me, and they're not happy with the fact that the majority of your bond money's going toward one street. I have no effect in that. I'm, I'm not the person that has to be elected.
Well, I have the right to march for Hershey D. Wilson.
I, I think I have the floor. I'm not in a dialogue back and forth with you.
Excuse me.
But the action the council took today, all that does is, that lets us get the engineering done. If the engineering's done in two weeks, and it's another week before council meets, I don't think that that, that project would go out for bid in seven days is going to make that bigger project in it, or that big a dent in it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Before we leave, I'd like to speak to Mr. Mustafa. Thank you so much. And again, I appreciate all that you do, my colleagues on this council, to support this project.
I believe that brings us to public comments at this time. Council recognizes Mr. Sammy Mears. And Sammy, as you make your way to the podium, I would ask everybody to state your name, your address, and please keep your comments to three minutes or under.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana 71101. Apparently, I heard this little joke that I thought was pretty funny, where this little boy was in court facing the judge, and the judge found out that he had been punished quite a bit, so he asked the little boy, "Do you want to stay with your mother?" She said, "No, she whips too much." He said, "Do you want to stay with your father?" "No, he whips more than she does. I'd rather go stay with the saints." And the judge said, "Why the saints?" He said, "They don't whip nobody."
I like that one. That's a good one. Say it again, maybe they didn't hear it. Those were cowboys.
He got it reversed.
Anyway, I saw that. Anyway, I would just like to say also that they finally got the situation straight over in Washington, and I'm happy to say that I'll be able to stay in my home and continue getting the money that I need to pay the bills and rent, as well as what everybody else, and I'm sure that housing is very happy about that. This apparently brings me now to a situation that I thought was ridiculous, that I had heard about last week on the news, and I thought this was an absolute joke, only to find out that it was not. When I heard about the food stamp fraud, and that's why I told you, Michael, about the beavers with buck teeth. Now, when I heard that they were over in Mansfield, Louisiana, and after the glitch came up, and they rushed over to Walmart, and somebody buys a television set with a food stamp card, and somebody has forty-nine cents on a food stamp card and trying to get seven hundred dollars' worth of food, it doesn't make any sense. And anyone who had about five or ten dollars on their food stamp card dragging about eight or hundred, yeah, eight hundred or nine hundred dollars' worth of food, I was just absolutely appalled, because I do have a food stamp card, but I only use it for food, and I try to balance out on my EBT what I know that I'm going to have left after I've done grocery shopping, and I circle the, you know, the receipt when I'm at home, that way I'll know. So when I found out that this person or persons went and got a TV with a food stamp card and took it home, that's why I wondered if they were beavers with buck teeth, or if their brains might have been on Jupiter, because when they said on the news that it happened in Mansfield, I said, "No, maybe they're on Jupiter." That was just my opinion. I was just absolutely appalled, because you cannot eat a TV, and it's not food. Anybody would know that I'm right, am I not? At least I think so. Now, if these people do happen to have buck teeth, and if they are beavers, and they decide to eat the evidence before the police come around, I'd love to be in a ringside, I'm watching you, Jeff. I'm going to be hopefully in a ringside seat to see this, because if they go [makes sound of a loud noise]. Let me tell you something. I'm going to want to see this, because if they can eat the evidence before the police come, okay. If not, they're caught. Thank you.
Thank you, Sammy.
Mike, I hadn't finished before you called him up.
Councilwoman McCullough, if you would like to have further.
I have some other people that I've been speaking to.
If you would like to have further conversation with staff, my suggestion, my suggestion is that you coordinate a meeting with the mayor and staff.
No, no, this is not for the mayor. This is for the departments, under Communications for Council Members. I have, I wanted to speak to Mustafa. I wanted to speak to Barbara Goodison as well. Barbara, you know the money that was borrowed from District A, the three hundred thousand dollars?
Let's let it come to, let's let it come to the podium, if you would.
Yeah, because she can hear. The three hundred thousand dollars, can you give me the status on that, that was borrowed from my district that was to be replaced in the month of June?
We have a, that's for the Russell Road Water Main Project. The project is ninety percent complete. We have a design meeting next Thursday morning, I believe, to go over those ninety percent plans with staff and utilities. We'll finalize those plans, and then we've got to find the three hundred thousand dollars to put back, unless.
Find it.
Mm-hmm. We're at the end of the year, and we're closing. We've got a couple of projects that we're getting ready to close with leftover monies. It's very restrictive. That project is a water main project, and so I have to be able to utilize monies that are left over from that are left over from other similar type water main projects, something that's not specific. And so, it, it's taking a little finagling because we have only so much money left. The bond issue projects are obviously, we did, when, um, we did the, the bond issue, there were no water main projects. And so, I can't use the 2011 bond issue money for water main projects, so I can't use any of the additional funds that have been kind of coming up, left over from projects, to replenish that funding. So, we're working on that. But the, the design plans are not complete just yet. We do have a review meeting scheduled for next Thursday morning, and the project is moving forward.
Okay, and the one thing I could have appreciated, Barbara, if this is, if the decision to borrow this money from my district was made by, say, the mayor, his administration, or yourself, what I could have appreciated it, what I could have appreciated, excuse me, is if as the representative of that district, someone would have notified or contacted me. I didn't know about this until it hit the agenda. So, you know, in the near future, anytime funding is being taken away from my district for the city of Shreveport, Oliver Jenkins, in any manner, could you please notify me as the elected official for District A to let me know beforehand?
Sure, not a problem.
Thank you so much, and I'll be looking for future updates on that $300,000.
Okay.
Thank you. And Mustafa, I need to hear from you.
As, as Oliver Mustafa is coming, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Councilwoman McCullough, we want to, to make sure you are aware that that wasn't an item that was introduced, uh, before this council, that this council had a chance to be able to review, deliberate, question, discuss, and debate before a vote was taken. And so, that, that's part of how the process works in terms of notification. When you get the agenda, it comes on for introduction. It's why those types of things that require, uh, the moving of money and what have you, are not being able to be voted on at a single meeting, uh, the layover so that you have a chance to be able to, to have that deliberative process take place. Uh, and so, you know, as requested, we'll try and get some, some, some prior notification. But, uh, all of that ends up coming in the form of the agenda itself initially being released, and then once the agenda's released, uh, review of that during the work session and during the discussion that goes back and forth during the actual meeting itself when exactly voted on, and as always, at least two weeks, uh, in between the meeting of introduction and the meeting of action.
I'd like to say this before I, before I speak to you, Mustafa, because I don't know if this council or if this chamber is aware, but, uh, the merging of Newton Smith and Northside to Lanier, which Lanier intersects Hershey D. Wilson, if they're going to be merging those two schools with the Lanier for sure, Hershey D. Wilson is going to be a definite need for the community, for the record, I wanted to inject that. But, uh, Mustafa, um, you came up yesterday and you said the design would be ready in two weeks. What, how were you able to make that determination?
I would be glad to tell you. Ron Norwood was in vacation yesterday, so I came here to council meeting representing Ron Norwood. Before I came to the meeting, I talked to both Robert Westerman and Andrew Zager, who's the engineer in our office, that has been handling Hershey D. Wilson project since the beginning, and I asked him about, because I expected this question to come up, I asked him about the status of the project. So, they told me two weeks at best, three at worst, the project, the plans, everything would be ready to go out for bids. And for the project to proceed out for bids, once they finish it, if it is finished like they said, like I said, they are handling the project, not me or Ron Norwood. If the plans are ready in three weeks, as the mayor mentioned, the funding need to be in place before you can proceed for bid. So, if we finish the plans and the funding is not appropriated, the project will sit and wait till the funding gets appropriated so you can proceed with the bid.
Thank you so much. That's all I have for you. And thank you so much for taking care of David Rains for me. I appreciate that. I wanted to take this opportunity, Chairman Corbin, to thank Shelley Regal, Shelley Regal and her team, as well as the mayor and his team, um, for the renovation of the David Rains Recreational Center, which is now open for operation. Thank you for all of your hard work and all of your efforts in making that happen for the citizens in District A. I want to thank Jeff Efferson and, and Councilman Sam Jenkins for coming out as well and celebrating with us, uh, at such a momentous occasion. But, um, I just want to say, thank you again, Shelley. You did a great job. And what we want to do is get the children, get the parent, get the families. We want to teach them a few morals on how to maintain and take care of their facility. I'm sure you're aware that the oven is not there yet, and the senior citizens are ready to do some cooking. But I want you to know that I really appreciate all that you've done. Thank you so much.
Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you, Chair, person, Corbin.
We'll go back to public comments. The council now recognizes Dr. Elizabeth Ishmael.
Good evening. This is Ishmael, Dr. Elizabeth Ishmael. And I vaguely remember introducing myself to you at the onset of this term, your council term. Uh, I am Dr. Elizabeth Ishmael, and I'm here to introduce my agenda concerning works within the limits of our city and direct concerns of the entire city council for the better and improved interest of the greater Shreveport metropolitan area. It is indeed your honor for my presence this afternoon, and it is my intention to be present for the two administrative council meetings in next month, for the 12th and the 26th, to discuss the things that I would like to discuss because I have a long list, well, not really a long list, but it's more than three minutes, and that will, um, allow us time today to just know what I'll be coming down here for next time, and you would be better prepared to hear me at that time. In regards to my citizenship and professional statuses, I, I am credentialed. I have 29 PhDs, 33 medical doctors, an LLD, four DNS, is an LLM, a DDS, and a DVM. Uh, one of my PhDs is in business, and just wanted to make that perfectly clear. On my return to these two subsequent meetings, I will address, in no particular order, the following topics: Shreve Memorial Library and issues concerning them, Spar, A.B. Palmer in particular, the SPD jail, and that is in duo with, although Bossier is not in a jurisdiction, there are many things that are going on in business and administration that that particular city will mimic to keep a mirror image and to keep our standards high. I also want to discuss bondsman capacities, the Cattle Community Action Agency, Cattle Parish School Board, and for the specific Cedar Grove area, the 71106 area, I want to discuss the neighborhood social organizations as they pertain to all environmental standards, unemployment, proprietorships and property owners, also small business organizations, accesses to resources, funding and verification processes, security for rural and neighborhood businesses, environmental standards, and for the political circuits, familial connections and network connections. That is all I have for today, just to give you a heads up. Also, next month, I won't sit so in front of the camera as I am animated, and I don't want to be so distracting, that way I can get your undivided attention when it's my turn to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a couple of comments. You have a lengthy list. Some of those things you may need to take up with the Cattle Commission, as they may fall under the Cattle Commission instead of the Shreveport City Council. Also, I believe from your address is Councilman Oliver Jenkins, your councilman.
In my district D?
I'm not sure if your district's C or District D.
Oh, I, I did forget what you had asked, my address, 566 East 71st Street, Shreveport, Louisiana 71106 dash 4404.
Okay.
I did forget that. I do apologize.
My suggestion would be, I'll verify if it's Councilman Jenkins or myself, and one of us contact you because some of, some of your concerns we may can get with staff members and you and Mr. Sibley and, and find some resolution, uh, in a more direct way.
Is an email efficient for contacting you and, uh, Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
I, I know they have them on the Shreveport City website, so all the, all of your contact information is there. Okay, so I'm looking at the cattle commissioners. I know a couple of their names. I'll look them up. But I'll begin with you all there so that may save me a trip on those particular dates and give me more time in a meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions? Okay, great. You all have a great evening.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, I now recognize Sandra Green.
Councilwoman McCullough, you may want to see these. I think that's in your district.
Sandra Green, my address is 25, uh, 2540 Kemp Lane, Shreveport, Louisiana. I am in District A. I came before you today to discuss the drainage in University Park subdivision, and I heard all the discussion about all of the things that you were discussing today that would pertain to me, but I came to discuss my problem. Uh, I live at 2540 Kemp Lane, and I have a critical drainage problem. Now, I don't know what monies you took from her that she can't use for my area, but I do need help. I live in the middle of the block on the low side of the hill, and in the front of my house, the water comes down. It stands on that street, and on that street is a low curve, so that water drains over into my yard. It has flooded my front door. It has, uh, caused me to have sewage problems. I've had sewage people out. When they flush it out, they tell me the water's coming out. I provided you with pictures. I know that you have not looked at them.
I did look at them.
Okay, but I wish you would because it will show you the terrible condition with which I live. And I was asked if I had contacted anybody. Yes, I have. I cornered the mayor at Albertson's one day and talked to him about it. I was referred to the council. I, I talked to someone from Mr. Mustafa's office, and they referred me to the water department. When they came out, they sent them out. They came out. They had already fixed the curve because of a line broke there, but it didn't help me. That, that wasn't their department. That man quickly informed me. That's not my problem. That is sewage and drainage. I never could get in touch with them. I talked with, um, Ms. McCullough on it, and she was going to get back with me with it. She has brought out her point to me today that, uh, she has no money because the money's been taken. I wish you would give it back to her if that's the problem. But my problem is that I'm sitting there with major drainage problems because the water runs off that street back into my property. I have worked all my life. I'm a taxpayer. I think I deserve better. Our streets in our neighborhood are terrible. They are horrible, the whole neighborhood. In the Rosen Mall subdivision, I'm glad Mr. Jenkins is back so he can hear me. And the Rosen Mall subdivision, up there on that area where they are, I know there's drain up there. There's some drains up there. I don't know if that whole subdivision has it, but they have drainage up there. I don't have any drainage on my street, so it is causing me major problems. My house is not sinking. I know you're going to tell me it's sinking all over Shreveport. I understand that. But when that water flows back, we're built on clay. That's our, that's the person who started our neighborhood, the Hunts Company. They're gone. We don't know where they are. They're gone. So, we can't address them. But I can address the fact that that water is flowing back into my house with that clay, and that's causing it. And I've talked to three, three different groups of, uh, people who can jack up a house, and they've all told me, "Yeah, we have no help. The water is flowing under that clay. It sinks, then it rises up, and when it's dry, it sinks again." I know that you're going to say, "That's not the city's fault," but the drainage up there is helping to cause it. My neighbors next door have the same problem. One on the other side, her garage floods. Another neighbor down the street, the porch floods. Another one next door to me, house is sinking too because that water is flowing back there. Now, what am I to do? I, and the, the, uh, cnet that your water district poured is now cracking. It is cracking because the water is getting up under it, and I'm not an engineer, but the water is getting up under it, and it's cracking.
Let me do this if I can. We've, we've all seen your photos. Councilwoman McCullough is, is aware of your problem. Mr. Sibley, can you get her contact information, and we try to narrow down who needs to come out and make a determination if there is a city issue or if it's grade, a lot grade or something like that?
There is a city issue. That water is coming from the street.
Well, it, it may be.
Uh-huh. It's coming from the street back on my property.
And that's why I'd like to-
So, how can it not be a city issue?
We'll check it out.
Now, I'm not asking you, you know, I'm not, I'm not asking you to buy me another house. I just want you to correct the drainage.
Make sure that before you leave, Mr. Sibley has your contact information so that he can be sure that the right person comes out and has a look at what's going on.
Okay. And to address what she's talking about with the street up there, yes, you came up there. She sent you up there. You came up there and you put blacktop on her street, and the, the next two weeks from there, it was back down in east-west. The street was terrible again. You're correcting it with the wrong thing. On, on Audrey Lane up there, the street is this way. All our cars, my car, is terrible. I know what she meant. I have a, a broken CD valve. The man said, "It's the streets." We need to do something in Shreveport about streets and everything, and particularly, don't, don't neglect my neighborhood. Please don't, because we pay taxes. Our money is green. We do the same thing that everybody else does. I worked 36 years. Nobody gave me anything. I worked 36 years and paid for my house, and now I have all this problem. I can't get my city to give me proper drainage, and I know there are problems, but I see other areas getting lots of stuff, and then my area is being neglected. And I feel ashamed that I live in Shreveport, Louisiana. That's why my kids and other people's kids are leaving the area because we are not taking care of the problems that we need to take care of. And I hope that my coming here today, if I have to come here every time you have a meeting, I'll be here. I'll be here because I'm concerned. I'm concerned about all of the issues in Shreveport, but this is my biggest concern right now, even though I am concerned about the crime and everything else that's going on, that we need to do something about in Shreveport, Louisiana. And I worked in Bossier Parish. Do I need to move back to Bossier, where everybody else is moving, it seems to me, Mr. Jenkins? Or do I stay, or do I move out on Yuri Drive? Or out on Elevator Road? And maybe then I can get some service. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Would you share this with Miss Woodley, please? And I'll get it from you. Ms. Green is my neighbor, actually. Share that with Miss Woodley. I told her I'd get that.
Before you go, Mr. Chairman, if you will. Um, I would, uh, would like to, to offer, uh, just a few comments. First of all, start by thanking you for coming down. Secondly, let me assure you that with regard to the, uh, expressions that were offered by Councilwoman McCullough earlier with regard to monies being taken from her district, what she's referring to is money that has to do with a water main project, um, not anything that has to do with street dollars. And that's a $300,000 circumstance that, as you heard Barbara Feversen state earlier, is in the process of being addressed. With regard to the monies that are designated for street repair and improvement, there has not been any money that's been taken away from District A. Let me also further, uh, stress to you that, as I shared with you when we spoke earlier, this project, uh, that you're talking about, this set of infrastructure issues, uh, that faced the MLK area, University Park in particular, uh, are on a list of projects that this administration has submitted to this council on at least three different occasions. At each term, we've not gotten more than two votes in order to be able to address that situation. So, I want you to understand that there is a sensitivity and appreciation- So I want you to understand that there is a sensitivity, an appreciation, and an awareness on the part of your mayor, on the part of this administration, and some members of this community. And I have no doubt, without question, the overwhelming majority of our citizens about the need to do something about our streets, as I referenced earlier. Our pavement management system is going to give us some specific direction on what to do about our half-billion-dollar-plus street, uh, problem. But we don't need that in order to know where we need to spend the first hundred, hundred-and-fifty-plus million dollars. You drive up to MLK, as I did the other day. And I want to thank the councilwoman for making reference to the opening of the David Rains Center again. I meant to do that in my earlier communications. But as you mentioned, and I can only think about the shift in my mood that occurred as I drove away on last Tuesday, the fifteenth, I believe, I guess a week ago today, after we had that glorious morning of activity. I, I drove in on cracked and beat up and broken roads, and I came off of, off of River Huckabee on David Rains to turn on the round road, which was relatively smooth, into David Rains for a grant program that gives credit to Terry Scott and their own, as the legal team, that helped us to go off and get back one point two million dollars from the contractors and the professionals who had misdesigned that project in similar fashion, where we had a set of professionals who were fed them to perform on the engineering and design of the Hershey D Wilson project. But it took us time. We got that money back, and we were able to put in those improvements. What shifted my mood, frankly, Ms. Green, was when I left the David Rains Center and drove through University Park on round roads, made the left onto Audrey Lane to go back towards MLK Drive. I had to drive down Audrey Lane, another street that is on an already established, well-known, well-documented list of egregious street projects that need to be done, and need to be done now in the city of Shreveport. Street projects that help to, uh, street projects that help to diminish and devalue the neighborhoods of this city. Street projects that end up causing people problems with their cars. Uh, street projects that, quite frankly, we could have probably been a long ways towards fixing right now, had we had the ability, as Councilwoman McCullough wants to imbue me with. Councilman Shine indicated an inclination on yesterday as well, if you gave me the ability to be able to go over there and punch at least four of those buttons. But our system didn't allow me to do that. What it does do is allow us to be able to continue to advocate and present before this council what we believe ought to be the actions that will lead us towards being able to effectively address our problems, whether that be with our water system, whether that be with our sewer system, whether that be with crime, whether it be with economic development, or in this case, whether it be with our infrastructure. Unfortunately, we might not have been able to come up to nearly the level of consensus that I think is appropriate in order to be able to address these types of problems. But the problem that you represent is one that is representative of an adequate infrastructure. The University Park subdivision, as you mentioned, was developed by the Hunt Company back in the nineteen-sixties. It represented a, a, a tremendous, tremendous elevation of the housing quality within the Kupole area at that time, and became a heaven for middle-class African-Americans from across northwest Louisiana. And it's still very much so today, and serves as much of a glue that still serves to hold on and connect the MLK Kupole community. And it's one of those places that, as a city, we need to continue to have folks like yourself who have options, who can, in fact, afford to live someplace else, still view it and consider it as a neighborhood of choice. And so we're gonna continue to advocate, that we try and figure out how to come up with some sort of a understanding with our council members, to be able to move forward on something that gives us a chance to be able to address those problems. We're gonna integrate the information that we're getting from our pavement management review process into that discussion. But the bottom line of it is right now, is that we need to go out and commit ourselves to acquiring additional resources. So, because no matter how much we talk about it and shift it around and chew on it, the bottom line of it is, none of this happens unless we're willing to stop and dig in our pockets and help pay for it. There's not going to be any miracle sums of money that are gonna float up from Baton Rouge. There's nothing that's gonna end up raining down on us from Washington. Uh, only thing that's gonna happen is that whether or not we're going to decide, as Shreveporters, whether or not we want to address the problems and challenges that we face as a city, and come up with the strategies that allow us to be able to do that. And you're coming here today adding another face, because every one of these council members, he can tell you, they've heard what I'm saying to you right now. They've heard it from, from this council. They've heard it from our private discussions. They've heard it from our infrastructure committee meetings with them. They've heard it from me, uh, time and time again, because it is one of the things that we see as of paramount importance. I'm thankful that we managed to be able to get progress on things like addressing our sanitary sewer system with this council and move forward. I'm thankful that we've managed to be able to come up with understanding how we go about improving our, uh, safe, public safety efforts, and, and things that we do in economic development, and, and in other areas of endeavor. Uh, one area that we're not on the same page on, and we need to continue to commit ourselves to working towards, is improving the quality of our streets. So we can send somebody out that's gonna come back and tell us the same thing that we already know. This is one of the projects that we need to address, and we need to address quickly. It is diminishing the quality of life for the people who live in the area.
Especially since you're sending groups of people up there, constantly sending us thousands of people to develop up their area, which is one of the largest black communities in the whole state. And you, you need to pick a.
But Ms. Green, I'm trying to send people to Shreveport and northwest Louisiana, period. Because the one thing that we need is people. Louisiana as a whole, that's why we, with great interest, and listen with great interest, as people talk about the, the growing portions of, of this region. Well, one side of the river added a few more people, and one neighborhood grew by two-hundred percent in somewhere else. The bottom line of it is, Louisiana as a state has grown at a very poor, anemic pace for the last forty years. And when you compare it to the level of growth and development across the rest of the country, especially the sunburn, we're not growing like the places where our children are going, the Atlantas, the Dallas's, the, the, the Birmingham's, the Floridas, the Carolinas. And there are a lot of reasons for that, not the least of which is that we have to figure out how it is that we manage to make Shreveport a place that those of us who are already here still want to live. And part of that entails having the ability to develop an agenda that allows us to go out and figure out how we begin to make more significant improvements on our streets and our other infrastructure.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Council now recognize.
So come back.
And if I get this first name wrong, I apologize. Uridel Williams. And they may not have lasted any higher to get a meeting. Council now recognize Pastor Mays.
Where'd the pictures go?
They got them down there. Pastor Mays, three thirty-five East as well, Shreveport, Louisiana. Just got a few things that I just want to comment on very briefly. I understand Councilwoman McCullough's concern concerning her district. What I want to speak to this council about is that if three million dollars, I think that's what's the number for each councilperson, for the needs of their district. My question to you guys is, and, and, and I see her position, and I understand it, but she's the councilperson for District A. Was any other councilperson in their district had the money that was promised to that particular district? We know the need is great in District A. Was any other district money was over a million dollars that was taken from any other, other, other districts? That was, that's one of my comments. I just, just want to know, did that happen? Or how did you base that decision on to take money from District A? And where did that money go to if it was a million dollars that was taken? Secondly, um, I want to speak with you guys about the rise in violence, until the citizens out there, they'll watch this, the rise in violence within our communities. Nobody wants to deal with this. Most people want to ignore it. They write it off, building bigger jails, hiring more police officers, is not solving the problem. I come up and I talk about problems, but let me help give a solution to some of these problems that has plagued our city. If we don't tie in the economic disadvantage that directly results to the rise in violence within our community, we're gonna keep building jails, bigger jails. So now, solution. Why don't we, as a city, rather than having companies that come in and only stay for a small period of time, why don't we invest incentives, give incentives to companies that are already existing in this community with a long-term relationship with the city of Shreveport? Some of these companies that we get, they come here for a while, they get big tax breaks, big incentives, and those companies leave. But these companies that are here, right here, located in the city of Shreveport, and when I say companies, I mean all companies, that has been here for a while, why are those same incentives are not going to those particular companies that has a relationship longstanding, a great rapport with this city? Why won't we start investing in those particular companies, giving incentives to them, so that they can hire more people? It, it's just, it's just a logical way of thinking. So that they will hire more people within a city that they have a base already, if they've been here for twenty, fifteen, twenty years, they're not going anywhere. So what, what's been happening is that, and what that would do, that would create more job creation, and the rise in the violence that's going on within our city will start to diminish. It's a known fact, and I appreciate everything all you guys are doing, it's a known fact, that when there are jobs, and the mayor, mayor, you said it perfectly, when there are jobs, the rise in violence decreased. But you gotta stop, and, 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 and I said this to the, to the planning commission, we gotta stop going and getting these companies that's not, are willing to be here long-term. They come and they go, and we're right back in the same position that we, we are here. So, and, and, and as much as I, I appreciate you guys taking the opportunity to let, let me speak in that regard, my thing is, is that that's the only way Shreveport, Louisiana, because right now, as the mayor said, the city of Shreveport are stagnated. People are leaving this place, going to other places. I asked my daughter, who just recently graduated with a degree, I asked her, I said, why don't you come back home? She said, come back home for what? What are we, that are pursuing high education degrees, what are they gonna come back here for?
Two.
Yeah, two. I'm, I'm sorry, two. What, what they gonna come back here to? And so, so my thing is, and, and I'm not gonna keep a lot of your time, why don't we just look into that? It's just an idea from Pastor Mays to you guys. As I spoke to the school board, um, on, early on today, Mayor Glover, I had a perfect solution for their problem. It, it's, it, it, it's not about passing the blame game. The perfect solution to their problem is that their curriculum, there needs to be more inclusive stuff added to their curriculum as it relates to African-American history. Just an idea. And one of the persons that, 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 we, we got history, but we, we, it needs to be more inclusive. So that needs to be added to the curriculum. Great idea. But until we take these ideas that people, regular citizens are giving, and say, look here, the people that's already here in Shreveport have said, if we, if we, if we take this money, if we take, not money, if we take these incentives and, and give them to tax breaks to those people that are already here, and they are able to do what now? Uh, Councilman Epperson, my councilman, they are able to do what now? They are able to now hire more people. So when you are able to hire more people, then what do they do, Mayor Glover? They help grow the city. And I perfectly agree with you. It, it's, the, the city of Shreveport is not growing. We have tried other models. I know we're trying hard to bring companies into Shreveport that is not willing to have a long-term commitment to, to this city. They come in, they deplete the city, and they leave. So that's just one suggestion that Pastor Mays have, and hopefully that it will be passed along, and, 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 and some of the small business owners within this city can get those incentives that they need to hire other individuals. Because I was at the fairground just recently, and I'm gonna share this with you, I'm gonna take my seat. There's not a lack of people that don't want to work in the city of Shreveport. People want to work, but the job opportunities are not available. So if we could start just saying, well, on a, on a serious note, to just start investing in these businesses that are already here, that has a long-term rapport with this city, and those businesses say, we can hire some more people, and that's gonna help this city to grow even more. So with that being said, I appreciate you guys listening, and, and I hope that, that some of this will be taken under consideration. But I, I do agree with Ms. McCullough in her overall view. Each person, because while I was down here when all this was being done, each person on the council, every district has a need. And the three million dollars that was agreed to for her district, if she choose to, the screets that she have already outlined, that Hershey D, and, and, yeah, and the other screets that she, who is better to know the concerns of their community than that councilperson? District C, District D, Mr. Mike, you know the concern. Every person up there knows the concerns of their district. So with just, just being fair and impartial, I just couldn't understand when I was hearing her saying that each one of you guys, which I was here when the agreement was made, to get a certain amount for their district. She knows the needs of her district. So why would you take away from a district that has a greater need? You know, it's just, it's, it's just beyond me. I just, you all got together, and y'all, y'all saw maybe more than what I saw, but I just see going up there how great the need is for that district as it relates to screets, whether it be Hershey D, or whether it be any other screet up there. But she did mention more than one screet. So with that being said, I just want to say once again, I appreciate the opportunity to come down here to speak before you guys. And to the parents that, that called me about, why is there so much killing going on to the city? I just don't blame, um, the, the police department or anybody else. What, what I'm trying to teach and trying to get out there to other people is that the parents also, those that's listening, because people, people are listening, to the parents also, all of us has to bear the responsibility. More officers, more prisons is not gonna solve the solution. The economic despair, putting people back to work, creating jobs, giving incentives to those people that are already here, that has a long-term relationship with this city, that would be the right way to go. So, Councilman Shine, I appreciate you, and I appreciate all you guys, appreciate the mayor, officer, for what, for what you are doing, and, 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 and I ask that God's spirit continue to dwell upon you guys. But to me, that's just kind of seen, without knowing the full totality of what, what occurred, but it just seemed to be unfair at this particular point to say, well, we're gonna remove a million dollars from District A, but that need is great in District A. And I don't know what other district that they put it in, or how did y'all, you know, y'all know how y'all did that, I don't. But if each councilperson was agreed to a certain amount for their district, they know the need of their district. And I know if you, if you could've got more, you, all the districts need more, because the screets are deplorable in, in, in all the districts. And that came from, as we had said a while back, that came from maintenance conditions. I mean, the problem, and I'm not blaming them, the problem was put off, put off, put off. Is that right, Mayor? They kept putting the problem off rather than addressing the problem. So if you keep putting the problem off, guess what happens? Over time, over time, this is what my mechanic told me out there at, at the Chrysler dealership out of Burcoons. He said, Reverend Mays, you can either pay the money now, or you can pay it later. He said, if you pay it now, you'll save. But either way it goes, you're either gonna pay more, or you're gonna pay less. So that's the problem the city of Shreveport faces. So I appreciate you guys. Thank you very much. God bless.
Thank you, Pastor Mays. And it is always refreshing to have a citizen come up and offer solutions as well as complaints. We appreciate that. And just a point of clarification, if I could. Councilwoman McCullough. Councilwoman McCullough did not lose a million dollars. All seven of us have $3 million of street money available.
Talking about sewers, you mentioned $300,000 in sewers.
He was referring to a million dollars taken from your district. Each of us have $3 million for streets. Sewer, sewer deal is something different. Mayor Glover?
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilman McCullough. Okay, Councilwoman, uh, I, I wanted to, to take the opportunity to be able to, to, uh, to make that point as well. Uh, uh, Pastor Mays, there, there was no money that's been taken. Um, the $3 million that the councilman or the chairman refers to, uh, is the $21 million, uh, in street money that was included within the April 2011 bond election. Uh, the way the council decided to be able to appropriate those dollars, and, and we couldn't argue with that, was to do so equally between the seven council districts, which result in a general appropriation of $3 million per district. Uh, those funds are there and still available, uh, to each of these council districts. Uh, the first $11 million of that $21 million was included within the first bond sale. Uh, these council members, along with the administration, uh, since August of 2011, have essentially identified the projects that they want to see go forward with that $3 million. As the chairman referred to earlier, some of those projects were ready to be constructed and all we had to do was to, uh, put the project out for bid and, and go ahead forward with the work that needed to be done. Some of them needed to be engineered and designed the same way that, uh, Hershey D. Wilson needs to be engineered and designed. Uh, the engineering and design for those projects have gone through, uh, without, uh, much problem or, or any sorts of hitches or hiccups. Uh, and some are being constructed, some are still waiting, uh, for the second bond sale to move forward with construction. Uh, the reference with regard to, uh, this particular million dollars is the fact that the engineering and design work that was contracted for, for the Hershey D. Wilson Project, uh, was appropriated by this council, uh, and the professionals were selected. Uh, their work has been found to be lacking. Uh, we had to, at the recommendation of the city engineer, uh, release them after a considerable amount of time of trying to work with them to give them an opportunity to be able to actually do the work. Once it became obvious that they were not going to be able to perform, the question became, what do we do? My direction was, because we know that this is a project that is of importance, obviously to Councilwoman McCullough, a great deal of importance to the folks of Kupera MLK area, and is a crucial part of our regional transportation system, we decided not to, to, to forestall, uh, any further, but to direct staff, which does not have the responsibility for doing so. But we directed them to pick up the pieces of what had been given to us, to sort it out and to reassemble it and put it all together and give us a complete set of documents that we can use as the basis of developing a set of bid documents that we can in fact put out for bid. It was with that anticipation that that process was coming to a conclusion, that Councilwoman McCullough went to her colleagues to ask them to go ahead and take a portion of available unappropriated dollars out of that $21 million that exists between all of them collectively and make it available now so the project could go to bid and start construction as soon as possible. What the council decided to do here today was to wait until that particular engineering and design process is absolutely complete before they vote to appropriate the million dollars. So there has not been any taking. The District A had an law so that District F could, could, could receive. District A had a law so that District B could receive. Uh, these monies are still available to all of these various districts, and the bottom line of it is, is that there's simply a need for more.
Right.
Two last things, if you don't mind, before, before, before I let you go. Uh, and that is, I, I appreciate your concern, uh, a- about the, the violence. Any violence in the city is one act of violence too many. Uh, I was honored, uh, last Thursday, uh, to join the family of Jonathan Davis, uh, as they held a prayer vigil, uh, to express their concern, uh, about, uh, his untimely death and to seek, uh, some, uh, solace, as well as to ask folks like myself what could be done about. Uh, uh, the thing that I want them to know, and, and as they share with me, is that we're going to always continue to be able to look to try and figure out how it is that we, uh, lower crime as best we can. I'm thankful that I sit here today in 2013 where we are at 24 homicides, which is 24 too many. I can remember sitting, uh, on a council, uh, in the 1990s, uh, on the 27th of October, where we had three times 24 homicides, over 70, uh, at the same time of the year. And so, uh, anytime someone loses their life, it's a tragedy. The fact that we're making progress on a path to be able to end up with a member that could be, uh, the, the second or third lowest official member, uh, in the city's history is something that, that I give thanks to, but we're going to continue. Like figuring out how we continue to keep, uh, people from a congregating at, at the raceway and engaging in the kind of activities that result in straight bullets, uh, killing people and Greenwood and Jewella and other places where we have problems and what have you. We're also going to continue to stress to try and find positive things for our young people to do, uh, like summer jobs, uh, and internships and other things that give them the kind of positive activities they need in order to be able to, to stay away, uh, from trouble. Lastly, on economic development piece, uh, you, you make some very good points, but we have two different things to try and do with economic development. The first job is to hold on to those companies that you already have. Do know that we work to do that, because they represent the greatest source of new jobs. It makes sense to pick what they call the low-hanging fruit. If you've got it, make sure that you try and keep it. Not only do you want to try and keep it, work with them to try and figure out ways to help them grow. We've done that with companies throughout this city, we'll continue to do so. Uh, but then also you want to use that as the basis for going out and competing against other communities to bring in companies that are looking to expand or relocate, because we still want to be able to bring in that new opportunity and those new jobs as well, and we try and strike that back. Uh, and appreciate your concern about the folks out at the fair. I did have a chance to be able to speak with Sam Giadonna, uh, and management, uh, to let them know that, uh, if there are opportunities for folks out there to be able to work, we're going to see them have that opportunity, uh, to be able to do so and make sure that those folks are treated with fairness and respect and the kind of presence and dignity that we all belong for ourselves. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much, because there, there was a misconception, that's why, uh, people was calling me as well. I said, "Well, I'll bring it up to where it can be addressed," and you can hear it from these individuals. Because people was thinking that money was being taken, so that's the reason why the basis of the comment came up. But you related to what was going on very professionally, both of you all. So that now people get a better understanding that money is not actually being taken from one place, putting it in another place. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, sir.
God bless. All right. If there are no further comments or discussion, I want to thank staff for staying here a little late and folks behind the scenes that are keeping things going. This meeting is adjourned.
That's overtime for you, all right? I had the pizza on the way, Phil.